In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, and Cablevision of Warwick, and posted on the district's website. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Mrs. Francisco, could you call the roll?
Mr. Bailey, Mr. Seidowitz.
Here.
Mr. Drew. Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Guarino.
Here.
Mrs. Fritz.
Here.
Mr. Huber.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
No one called?
No.
Okay. I'm going to need a motion for executive session for nine o'clock.
Okay.
I move that we adopt the rest.
We're just doing the motion for executive session first, Will.
No, I don't have to read that?
No.
You don't have to.
It's right there.
I move that motion.
Okay. Need a second?
Second.
Sorry. Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Dr. Anamon?
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February meeting of our Board of Education. We have a first, we have a student presentation to begin our evening. We've discussed STEM on many different occasions, at the board meeting, at the board level, also in committee, since I've been here, really. And we did bring some staff members here. We have Colleen Weiss-Majasic, our Supervisor of Science. She is here. And we have two staff members, Karen Flaherty from the high school and Mary Bozemeyer from Macapin. And they each have some students here. They're going to give us a brief robotics demonstration.
Good evening. Thank you. I think you probably are all aware that we've had a robotics club for a number of years. Recently, Ms. Bozemeyer started joining Mrs. Flaherty and Mr. Midora at the high school, bringing some students over from Macapin. And earlier in the year, Mrs. Flaherty said to me, you know what? I really love to compete. And I said, let's just jump in. Let's just find a competition and do this. So she spent the day up at High Point with a robotics teacher there and came away with a competition that we were, that we did compete in earlier in the year, in Sparta. And this is the robot they created. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Flaherty and Ms. Bozemeyer and their students and let them tell you about what they did.
We have brought about a dozen Macapin Middle School students now that are very interested in becoming part of the robotics program. Very excited to get them acclimated early, especially with the competition aspect of the program. And I think that's really all I have to say about it, that we're just really happy to boost the numbers in the club and get them started at seventh grade, eighth grade, and then when they get to high school, they already are well acquainted with the robot, the programming, how competition works. And so it's been very exciting. Your turn.
Well, I'll give you one of these because this was, I have brought a few of these. This was the competition that we jumped into. First of all, thank you so much for supporting us. It was so thrilling. It really was this year to be able to jump in there and compete. We were so excited. We came in third place to last, but we didn't care. And we didn't care. We really didn't care. So the kids are going to really tell you what they did. I'm just going to tell you this. So when I went to High Point, I was able to see, first of all, the long-term goal is that we can host our own competition at the high school. Because if we can do that, we get the field. Whatever the field is that year, we get that, which is an advantage for us. And we get money. We get, I believe it's $500. We get a stipend amount where we can use it for extra materials that we need. So we would love to do that. But overall, this course had, it was a 12 by 12, and that's all I'm going to say because Zach is going to speak to this. But what you see here is what you saw there. It was 12 by 12. What you see over there was over here. So Zach is going to speak to that. Go ahead, Zach. You speak to the field itself.
Okay, so pretty much like the field that we put together, like in the robotics team was like scaled to the actual, like, field that we were actually testing the robot on. So what we did was we scaled it by Mandarin, then we put like all kinds of tape, duct tape on the floor where we're supposed to be. And that's how we tested. And we, obviously, we have test codes right here. And as you might already know, like, there's a, in the high school, there's a robotics class that's now opening up to sophomores and freshmen, which I'm obviously probably going to be interested in in the upcoming years.
Thanks. I'd like to say that this was a combined effort this year. We were limited for time, and we really didn't know what we were doing. So it was a combined effort between my classes, my robotics class, and the robotics club. And we had builders, a builder, builders, programmers, and drivers. My programmers are here, so they're going to want them to speak to that.
Hi, my name's Dean Montesano. So first thing, we got the package with the robot in it about three weeks before the competition, so we didn't really have a lot of time. But we opened it up, and there was just a whole lot of mess of pieces and whatnot that you could put together. And we didn't really know how to begin. So we found a manual, and we basically just built the basic robot, the claw robot, that the manual had said to build. So me and another student, Seamus, we worked together and we built the robot step by step together, and it came out to be pretty good. Nothing special like some of the other people at the competition, but just a standard robot. And it worked. So the next portion of it was the programming. And unfortunately, not many people, or actually, nobody knew the Robot C program language that the robot took. But I had taken C++ the year before and was able to use the knowledge of C++ I had and just kind of look up videos online to learn the Robot C language. And then eventually, we were able to develop a program that worked for the controller so that we could move it manually. And then eventually, we were able to move it autonomously. That, actually, the autonomous period, we just figured out how to do about two days before the competition, so that was fun working to figure that one out. But I'll let Maggie speak now to the rest of the party.
My name is Maggie. I'm a senior at the high school. Unlike Dean, I had not taken C++ ever, and I had no idea what anybody was talking about. So you see all the packets you got with the little gold fasteners? That was my job. I put all the fasteners in there because I was essentially just trying to distance myself from the robot. Because I saw everybody, you know, building and programming, and I just had no idea what we were doing at all. And then one day, Ms. Flaherty came over, and she was like, Maggie, you know, why aren't you helping? I want you to be involved with this. And she handed me a laptop and said, just go on YouTube and look it up and just figure it out. And so I found a few YouTube videos, and I followed them step by step, and just input things into the program. And now we were all around the robot, and everybody was trying to use it. And I said, hey, you know, can we just, can we try this? And I didn't think it was going to work. And then we plugged in the program, and the arm moved up and down. And then Ms. Flaherty was like jumping for joy. And she was like, move! It moved! And that was just great. And so Dean and I worked together. We were sitting at the computer and just following YouTube videos and trying to figure out how to use it. And everybody in the class was so involved and just so into it. Even the people in our class that, you know, for the beginning of the year, they weren't really into it. They were just sort of there, you know, seniors trying to get their credits in, not really passionate about robotics. And then you see all these kids like fighting over the controller, and they're like, I want to try it, I want to try it, I want to do it. And, you know, we couldn't have do it, we couldn't have done it without the Macapin kids, you know, coming over and using the field and doing everything. And like Dean said, we did not have a lot of time, and nobody really knew what they were doing. But so I think that everything coming together was sort of a miracle. It was just like, it was good, you know, we didn't do amazing at the competition, but we did what we could. And that was good enough for all of us. And it was just really a great experience. And I'm so happy that the younger kids are getting involved with it. Because as a senior, I took this class, and so now, you know, it was only a two marking period class, so I'm out of it now. And I do, I miss it, and I wish I could go back, you know, building with Legos and programming and working everything out. So I'm really very excited that the younger kids are getting into it and that they're really passionate about it. That's about it, really. But robotics was really awesome, and I'm just so happy that everybody else is getting involved in it.
Okay, so we have builders, programmers, and we have drivers.
Hello.
Driver.
Where should we go? You have a good show. Hello. So like Maggie said, I'm, well, it's more like a combined effort. And the robot isn't, doesn't look like much, but it's honestly, it's pretty decent, I guess.
It was very reliable.
Exactly.
Everyone else just broke down at the competition, and ours did it.
Good. Yeah, good.
Yeah, so what the robot can do, basically, is it can pick up the clock and open itself up. It can drive around. It can, it can't really pick up like one of the bigger cones, but it can pick up the smaller cones to get, on the bigger cone, to get more points. And you see the little humps over there. If you get to the very edge of the last hump, it's more points. So it's 20, and then the middle is 10, and then the last one is 5. And if you guys want, I'll just demonstrate it right now.
And it was a timed event. Oh, it was timed.
Fortunately, we didn't get a lot of time.
And there were others in the arena at the same time.
Exactly.
Come on, you can do it. Come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. All right.
Roll it over there.
Take another one. You want me to just?
Oh, it's like going top of that. Double tip ice cream cone. All right.
Plus, the arm isn't actually as tall because we were trying to go for like, there's bigger poles than that. It's like, just a couple of feet high, but since arm is like not as, not as tall as the other, as other robots, it can't really reach up to the highest points. But it can go over humps, so that's good.
I presume you jumped in here because everybody sees him using handheld remote, right? So that was programmed by the students. Nothing named ready to go. They not programmed the remote. They had to tell it what the robot was going to do, and then have it go ahead and do it.
All right, here we go.
So do any of you want to give it a try?
Come on, Will, you know you do.
Come on, it's fine. It's completely.
Will wants a try.
I can teach you the controls.
And you go over there with it.
All right. Watch out, Barbara.
He's going to sniff your toes.
Oh, they're starting controls.
Hope you don't drive like that.
Those are the only ones. Oh, wow. Come here, Dan. All right, I won't get carried away. Thank you very much. Oh, my gosh. All right, take it away from me.
I wish they had that when I was in school.
You know, I also want to say, if you don't mind, that the night that we had that showcase hunt was really important for our robotics club. Number one, thank you Susan Eppicker, because those poles were from the maker's space.
Wow.
And what we did that night was, we went down to the maker's space, and we just gathered a lot of stuff so we could make some type of obstacle course, so we could get, draw people in as they were coming in. And at the same time, we had a video going of the competition that we wanted to get into, which proved really helpful for our club. So thank you for that opportunity.
I knew there was a plan. I knew there was.
All right.
Now he's playing. I could tell just by his face.
Almost like it's got a personality. It's a little scary.
So why don't you guys grab everything and start to gather it up, and I'll just finish up here. How's that be? So thank you again for your support. Obviously, just jumping in is the best way to go because, as with any good engineering, you don't know the problems you have to solve until you encounter them. So we discovered that our robot was super reliable. Other ones broke down. We were, in the area we were in, there were four different robots at the same time, two on the blue team, two on the red team. And you were competing against the other color team with your team. So there was another group that said, our autonomous program is great, let us do it. And there's totally crashed and burned. So again, we were, you know, better off than we thought right from the get-go. We're going to enter another competition in May. We're going to go to PCCC and jump into their competition. It's a little bit different. This one is Vex, that one is Tetrix. So we're looking at two different robot types, but same programming platform, and kind of building the program from there. In addition to that, our science limpiad team jumped in this year. We won some medals on the high school level, and this is the first year that we had a Macapin team join us, which was really a lot of fun. The high school coaches agreed to coach both the Macapin team and the high school team. So we came home with medals in two events on the high school level and two events on the middle school level. So that's always gratifying. And as we're becoming a more STEM-focused society, we now have students asking us for another physics course. So we put chemistry B in place a couple of years ago, and those students are now asking, can we have physics next year? So we'll be looking to add a physics course. So lots of great things going on in science. And always, I'm grateful and thankful for all of your support in helping us make these things happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Colleen. Thank you, Mary and Karen. Really appreciate your time. Thank you to our four students who came out tonight. You're dismissed from the meeting. You don't have to stay any longer. Feel free to go home. And I'll see if anything we can do to help you in May or next year, just please let us know. We'd love to support you, so.
That was great.
That was a very nice.
Very good. Great, great, great.
Okay, next up, last, I want to say last spring.
Oh, quick question. That costs money to buy the kit?
Everything costs money.
However much you want to spend on more of those and more teams, I'm 100% there. I mean, that's exciting. It really is. And other kids see that and they get excited. It's way more interesting than a board meeting, I'll tell you that much.
Thank you. It was a nice presentation. Next up, last year, I believe it was in the spring, Governor Christie announced an opioid education awareness program statewide. It didn't run until its completion until after he had left office. So we have a new governor now, Governor Murphy, and probably maybe two weeks ago, they finally released the fact sheet. So I shared it with the board members here. There's copies on the counter here. This is what we share with our student athletes, with our parents, with our coaches. So it's a lot of good information on here. I just wanted to follow that up. Very important stuff. Next up, we have a coaching honor. I was hoping to award this tonight to Coach Taylor Peveney. He was named the state county wrestling coach of the year. However, Coach Peveney has practiced today because he has our very own Trevor Fleet qualified for the state tournament this weekend down in Atlantic City at 126 pounds. So Coach Peveney can't be here, but he will be getting a certificate of honor from me on behalf of the Board of Education. So congratulations, Coach Peveney. And last up, the monthly progress toward district school and department goals. Dan's going to handle most of the educational updates tonight. I'm going to handle more of a financial update, just to give the community an update and even the board, because they can always use a refresher course. But our budget timeline, our budget calendar, we're in the middle of it. We're getting close to the end of it. So just to give members of the public an idea of how long this has been working on, we started working on the budget internally in October of this year, the administration here, working with the principals and supervisors. We had meetings in October, November. Also in October, the Budget and Finance Committee developed budget guidelines for this year. Those guidelines include things like we will use zero-based budgeting principles, we will be respectful of the use of public monies, we'll look to find efficiencies, and so on and so forth. Those were developed in the fall. Just last week, we held a special Board of Ed meeting, a committee to hold discussion on the budget. Normally, this is about the time of year, late February, where we receive our state aid figures. Usually, it's right after President's Day. This year, because of the new administration, that deadline was pushed back three weeks. So the governor's budget address, which is normally held the day after President's Day, has been pushed back to Tuesday, March 13th this year. The state aid figures are uploaded into the, onto the database two days after, 48 hours or so. We should get our state aid figures on March 15th. And we have our preliminary budget presentation, and the board has to vote on the preliminary budget on March 20th. So it's really a five-day window, and in reality, we'll probably get the state aid figures, we won't get them at 9:00 AM on the 15th, we'll get them at 4:59 PM. So it doesn't leave a whole lot of time for us. So after the board votes and adopts a preliminary budget, it is sent to the executive county superintendent and advertised in the newspaper, all the local newspapers, The Record, et cetera. And then we will hold another public hearing, right? We will hold a public hearing, and the board will vote again at the end of April, April 24th. So at that point, that's the end of the budget process. So we have about two more months to go. So we have a lot of outstanding, we have some significant variables out there yet. So nothing's really been finalized. We have our state aid figures yet to come in for a few weeks. That's approximately $15 million last year, give or take. So we don't know if that number is going to be 15 million, or 12 million, or 16 million, or no change. So it's a big number out there that's just not firmed up yet. Our health benefits budget line, this expenditure, is about 11 and a half million. That has also not been finalized. So we have some other variables as well. But these are two large numbers that we just don't have finalized, which is why we can't present to the board, we can't present to the community, a finalized preliminary budget. So this is going to take a couple more weeks until we get these numbers hashed out, and we have a much stronger idea of what we're looking at. Okay? Next up?
Students' report.
Student's report. Ms. Madison?
So February 2018 has been a crazy month for the Highlanders. Winter sports are coming to an end, and our basketball team, cheerleading, dance, and wrestling have had a great season. We had a massive wrestling tournament at our school this past week, and it sounded like it was really fun. There is word going around about the start of a new mini golf club, so that's really exciting. A lot of students are talking about it. The musical is approaching, and will be held next Thursday through Saturday. And now we have two shows on Saturday. So come see The Little Mermaid. And up and coming in March, we have the Empty Bowls fundraiser, junior prom, and the All District Arts Festival.
Thank you. That's all for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. As Dr. Anamon mentioned in his monthly progress towards goals, I'm going to talk about a few of our educational initiatives that we're able to play out over the last month. One of them is a brief update. On February 20th, we had a professional development day, which for our staff is the equivalent of a nice, big, deep, mindful breath. I see one of our mindfulness representatives in the audience, so I threw that in here. But a professional development day, the way we've been running the last few years, has really tied into our district goals. In particular, our goals in our math department and our goals in the differentiation instruction for all students. So I'm just going to give a few highlights from across the day in a few of our departments. And I'm going to start from kindergarten and work my way up. Our teachers in grades kindergarten through two, they met, they did half a day with a representative from our potential new phonics program. We've been in the process of looking at a variety of multisensory phonics programs that are, that are popular in other districts and research-based. And we brought in one of those vendors in particular to work with our staff. That seems to be one of our highest contenders at this point. Our staff got a good experience with that program. Second half of the day, they spent with representatives who trained them on interactive smartboard use. It's not actually a smartboard, it's a projector that has interactivity and smart notebook hands-on software, so they spent half a day with that. Grades three through six had a day where they were able to stay in their, their own building, and they worked with their grade-level peers on a number of the initiatives that we've had through over the last few years, which is readers and writers workshops. They were able to stay in their classroom, work with their grade-level colleagues, and just, you know, take a day to go through the materials that they've been presented with and talk about how it really works in the classroom. So I know that day was greatly appreciated, and we have to do a little bit more of that for everyone going forward. Grades seven, six, seven, and eight teachers of history and social sciences, they met with a representative to talk about updates to Holocaust education and how it presents in our standards. Grades seven, six and seven teachers of math, they spent a full day with the Glencoe publisher in anticipation of a new textbook series in grades six and seven for next year. So they had a good day of a preview with that program. They were able to get their hands on it. They were able to try out some new online tools that are supportive with that program. So I know they had a great day with that. Our grades eight through 12 teachers of math spent the day with a presenter that we had back in September. His name's Dr. Milo from Roman University, and it was a day of best practices in math instruction, building on what they worked on beginning in September. Lot of interactivity, a lot of whole-class engagement strategies, and the teachers really appreciated the work that they got from that. Our remaining departments in grades seven through 12, we had a presentation in Google Classroom for beginner and advanced users. And we also had presentations in something called Flip Classroom. And they're both, you know, class engagement, student engagement structures. And our staff was able to spend half a day with Flip Classroom, half a day with Google Classroom, and were able to work with that. One activity that we had in place, which was, we talked about at the last meeting, the board approves for us to bring in our cafeteria aids for Project Adventure and outdoor supervision training. So they had a great day. They spent the day with Mr. Strians and a few representatives from our phys ed department. Mr. Strians was able to walk them through outdoor supervision and some of the, you know, some of the best practices that we see in that. And they were able to work on team building and some structured play ideas for some of the things that we do in our Project Adventure program. So that's, in a nutshell, some of the highlights. We, you know, we got a lot of great feedback from our staff in being able to spend a meaningful day with our professional development plans. Another area I wanted to highlight, and I'll try and go through briefly. Last year, we began, or we started the process of working with a company called Renaissance in terms of a program called Star Math. And we were able to train our staff. It's a, it's a benchmark assessment for math, which was something we didn't previously have in the school district. We administer this assessment now in grades, all students in grades two through eight. And we also added it mid-year to our geometry and algebra students. And I just wanted to report on, this is our, we gave our second administration of the assessment. We gave a, you know, pre-test in the fall, very early on in the year. We did it in early October. And then we did our follow-up in January. And I just wanted to report out percentile growth gains by grade level across the district. In grades two, we increased 11.4 in our percentile rank. And I'm just going to, for those of you who don't know, percentile ranked scores range from 1 through 99 and express student ability relative to the scores of other students in the same grade nationwide. And when we first got into using Star Math, we were presented to the board that is a comparison between approximately 280,000 students nationwide who use the STAR assessment. So that's pretty much the comparison pool that we're going against. So, that's, that's pretty much the, the comparison pool that we're, we're going against. In grade three, we improved 7.1 percentile points. In grade four, this is an average across all of our students at, at the grade level, 9.4 in grade four, 9.7 in grade five, 10.3 in grade six, 6.1 in grade seven, and 2.2 in grade eight. And I mentioned that we have, we, we worked with our geometry and algebra students, but we, we started that mid-year, that wasn't part of our original proposal, but we added it because of the interest in our staff from, from the assessment. So, we don't have a, we just got our baseline with that group. We'll give a follow-up assessment in last week of March, first week of April, the, the two weeks prior, two, prior to our spring break, and we'll be able to get some, some growth data out of, out of that.
I'm sorry, I missed it. When was the baseline that that's based on?
This was early October. So, basically, you get a, you get a window that we're able to take these assessments. We can take these assessments at any time, but during a certain window is where we pull our data from. We get a wide range of data, grade level equivalency, percentile rank, comparison for projected park readiness, comparison against state, state standards. We sent a parent letter home with, with all of our students at report card time, so parents were able to get that report to show some of the numbers that I was just talking about, grade equivalency, percentile rank, comparison to, to park readiness, and, and that sort of thing. Also, since our last meeting, we had some new additions to our, our ranks of schools who are named in state or national schools of character, joining our list of schools who are already, when I see a large PK crowd, so I'll make sure I'll mention that PK is a state and national school of character, along with our Upper Greenwood Lake and Macapin School, and also Maple Road School, our state and national winners. The new additions to that were the Marshall Hill School, won the title of honorable mention, and the Westbrook School, school we're all in, is, just received the rank of state, state school of character, and the West Milford High School also received the recognition of high, of state school of character. Last year, they were named as honorable mention, and this year, they won the state rank. So, the process for being recognized nationally is taking place over the next two months. During the month of March, we get site visits from Character.org, who will come into the building, interview staff, interview students, they work with focus groups, and they talk to parents, and they, you know, make their designations for that. So, we anticipate our, our new schools who have been added to this list will do a presentation down at Rider University in May, and they'll present their school and, and their character education program to everyone in attendance at, at that time. So, it's a, that's a great honor. It leads me to announcing, this is the first night of my onslaught of Honeywell messages in regard, regard to Digital Citizenship Night. Award-winning, congressionally-recognized Digital Citizenship Night. This year, our event takes place on March 19th. It's the first year that we're going to use the West Milford High School as our venue. We're going to try and highlight our, our new auditorium. It also gives us the opportunity to have all of our families in attendance have dinner at the same time, which I think will be a nice, nice upgrade, because, you know, one of the things that we've seen is we hand out two sets of schedules, Group A each first, Group B each second, and we get a lot of Bs who slip in with the As because they're hungry. So, we're going to try and cater to that and, and allow all of our families and children to eat at the same time. I'm very excited that I am not going to be doing the presentation this year, but we're bringing in a woman named Melissa Straub, who has been in district before. We have had a few present, parent presentations with Melissa Straub over the last three years. She's from an organization called High Impact Youth. She is a former law enforcement agent, and she has worked in a cybercrimes unit, and she does a phenomenal presentation on cyberbullying and digital citizenship, and really gives parents the, the straight talk on, on what they need to know. She's worked with our students quite a few times, she was here this year, she met with all of our, she met with all of our students in grades four through eight this year. She was here previously, two years ago, where she met with all of our students, four through 12, and she's had some individual parent nights that weren't connected to a major event, where we get a turnout of about 20 to 30 parents. So, the, the hope is that we'll bring her into this event, and we'll get that crowd, that, that great turnout that we, that we usually get. The plan is that she will work with a combined group of parents and students for a group discussion. We'll have dinner and activities, and then we're going to have a breakout at the end, where Melissa Straub will talk just to parents and, and talk about some of the things that are just a little bit more parent-appropriate, and at that time, our students will be working with our staff members, who, you know, led by Mrs. Laura Oaks and our Educational Technology Committee, who've been really fantastic in, in helping get this event going this year. So, I apologize in advance for the many Honeywells that you're going to receive. You can anticipate that the permission slips will come home at the end of next week with an RSVP, RSVP about a week, week and a half before the event. So, again, I apologize in advance, but, but get ready. Again, it's for grades, students in grades five through eight, but we've, we've had a tremendous turnout with it in the past, so I'm excited to announce it. And I think I'm done.
Sorry, I forgot one thing before, I should have remembered, but I forgot. So, I'm going to jump right in, one last piece. This past week, and weekend, West Milford High School hosted a, something called a Region One Wrestling Tournament. This is a three-day event. It was Wednesday, Friday, and all day Saturday. There's one of, it's one of eight regions in the state. It's the second leg of the state tournament for high school wrestling. The final week is this weekend ahead of, down at Lang City. I was speaking with the head official, he's a 46-year veteran official, and he says he's been working region tournaments for 33 years, and this was the best region he's ever worked in. So, some small token words of thanks are, are needed. Our wrestling coaching staff, coaches Pevney, Blakely, Stoll, and Spencer, they were critical in helping out and make sure the weekend ran wonderfully. They were creating the brackets, they were just helping out with the organization. Our booster clubs combined to work the concession stand, which is held in the cafeteria, the sold-out event. The podium that we use for photographs for our place winners, it's the ones you've seen, ones you've seen in the Olympics with the first place here and the second place, that was created by our students in Mr. Beatty's woodshop class. We had Board of Education trustee Ray Guarino volunteer his time all three days as a scorekeeper or clock operator.
Computer guy.
Computer guy.
I got the state all the information.
Okay, so, that's right. He was uploading the winners in real time to the brackets online, so people across the state could follow along with Region One. Obviously, another Board of Ed trustee, Mr. Bailey, was instrumental. He assisted us with many different issues. We are, every region is eight regions, they had a, it was broadcast on a website, I think it was News 12, purchased the rights to broadcast. We have a TV science class here with Mr. Jordan. He had four of his students, Norman Robinsky, Luis Velez, Joey Heisler, and Kyle Fernley, working a, our own livestream. So, livestream events were banned, or not allowed at all the region events. So, Mr. Bailey placed a well-timed call down to Robbinsville at the NJAS IAA, and they permitted our students to run a livestream event of Region One. So, we put the link out, we had over 1,000 people watching, in addition to a sold-out gym. So, thank you, Mr. Bailey. Thank you to Mr. Jordan and his students for creating the livestream on their own time. The livestream that we put together was probably in higher quality than the one that was professionally produced. So, I had them on my phone and my friend's phone at the same time watching it, so. And lastly, congratulations, and thank you to Joe Trenta Costa, Athletic Director, for running such a wonderful event. He sent me, there's a Google document here that he forwarded to me, and it was, "Coaches and referees, last night was awesome, you guys did a great job." Last year, the region was held at Bergen Community College, so this coach says that Bergen Community is 10 minutes from my house, but I would rather be at West Milford any day of the week. Tournament was run efficiently, we would be blessed for you to have us back. So, we're looking forward to hosting in 2019, and again, thank you, Mr. Bailey, thank you, Mr. Guarino, again, for your spirit of volunteerism. Greatly appreciate it.
Mrs. Francisco, Special Reports and Correspondence, can we just break up the minutes there so that the May 26, 2015 is separate vote, okay?
Sure.
Because I wasn't here, Mr. Guarino.
I don't know whether that's an issue, Mr. Roselli.
It's, it's not an issue. We just have to correct one item on the minutes. You can vote on them, assuming that you feel you have enough information to do so from the business office.
I just assumed abstaining, I don't know.
So, you, but you are, you could just abstain on that one and vote yes to the rest, so you don't have to break them up specifically.
Okay. So, we need a motion for the minutes? Okay, wants a motion, the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you. Okay, wait, we need a second. Okay, so now, would you do them all as a whole, or break them out?
You can, you can move them all at once, like the motion says, and you can just vote yes or no, and or.
Okay, it's not a roll call, though, it's a voice call.
But you can still do that.
Okay. All right, well, why don't we just, okay.
Any of us that weren't here for that, really, do you have a motion now?
So, like I said, you don't have to abstain, assuming you feel like you have enough information to vote.
Just to clarify, I did put information in the Budget and Finance minutes so that everybody understood that one of the resolutions never made it to the original ones that were approved.
Right.
Did you have a question, Mr. Joe?
Yeah, what was the revision to May 26?
It was in the Budget and Finance minutes. We had approved a resolution after executive session for appointing Kevin, Kevin Senebrino and associates to do the referendum.
Yeah.
And we realized that it wasn't in there.
It just never made the final minutes, so we need to approve it.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I think I'll just, can we just do the May 26 first, and then we'll do the rest together? All those in favor for the May 26 regular minutes revised, say aye.
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 Any abstentions?
Abstention.
Three.
Okay.
Myself. And now the, the remainder of the minutes. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstention.
Okay, and one abstention. Legal report.
We will discuss legal matters in executive session after the regular business.
Under the President's Report, one thing that I, I wanted to say, New Jersey School Boards also is running a workshop on the opioid crisis on April 13th, and Board members, I'm sure they, if you got it in your mailing, so if anybody's interested in that, that's April 13th, and it's a 9 to 3, I think it's in.
3:30.
3:30 at Mercer Conference Center. Also, taking note on the agenda tonight, I see that Mrs. Seaver is retiring. I'd like to wish her well after 30 years in the district. She's earned her retirement, so good luck to her. I was going to talk about the play, but Madison addressed that. I think you all should come out and see it, it's going to be quite, quite an interesting array. We have kids flying, we have fish flying, it's going to be a one, a wonderful three-day event, and if you have a little one that loves The Little Mermaid, definitely try to get to the matinee performance and do the before cast, before show pictures with the cast members, it's going to be a fun day for everyone. I'd like, Dr. Anamon said, our next meeting is the 13th, and that is not a budget meeting because we're not going to get our state aid numbers until probably the 15th, so March 20th will be the meeting where we will be discussing the budget, and they'll, we're hopeful, I would like to build a question and answer in there so that parents will be able to come up and address the budget at that time, because we're not going to have any answers on the state aid before that. I think that's about all under my President's Report tonight. So, now petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first, with five minutes for each petitioner, for a period of 30 minutes, and then, a time permitting, other petitions and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until the 30-minute time period expires, or transpires. Petitioners speaking during petitions and requests are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full names, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the name of students during the petitions and requests. Has anybody signed up to speak?
No.
Would anyone like to speak? Come on up, Mr. Foodie. On an agenda item, please.
Oh, yeah, it's on the agenda. James Foodie, Toquashaw Trail North, Uatt, New Jersey. First agenda item, Safety Committee. You had a lockdown the other day, all right? Class my daughter was in, they made the kids line up against an accordion that goes to divider for the classroom as it's shaking. If somebody came in from the other side, easily get shot up. I mean, let, let's think about it a little more. Also, I had the opportunity to drop my daughter off because my, my wife had mentioned it to me on several occasions. She dropped her, my daughter off at school in the morning, and there's nobody out front, doors are wide open, anybody can get in. After what happened in Florida and what's happened in all schools across the nation, why there isn't administrators out in front of that building? Mrs. Van Dyke, your husband was away, my she, my wife did mention that she saw your husband outside a few times, but he's in California, and there's, there's nobody, there's nobody around.
Let's not bring up my husband, please.
I'm, I'm, I'm not bringing up, I'm, whatever. But after watching the meeting last week, you guys talk about new bleachers and new fieldhouse, and nowhere, except Mr. Bailey mentioned about his friends in the security business, I think getting the, the security in order is, is more important of an issue than, at this time, than bleachers and a fieldhouse. So, I would hope that you guys could discuss that in Budget and Finance. Mr., Mr. Drew, I had him on Budget and Finance as the committee chair.
Is this about an item on the agenda?
Is Budget and Finance and the chair on the, on the agenda?
Is this about the agenda, Mr. Foodie?
It's on the agenda. Is Budget and Finance on the agenda?
Is the item, no, it is not. What you're discussing is not on the agenda as you're speaking. Is there a topic on the agenda?
Budget and Finance is on the agenda, and the chair is on the agenda.
So, Mr. Foodie, that's not an agenda item? An agenda item is a resolution.
Budget and Finance isn't an agenda item?
Not specifically. If there's an, if there's an agenda item under Budget and Finance.
It'll come up next time.
I, I'll let you go on the safety issue.
No problem, no problem.
Excuse me, I'm okay with the safety issue because.
Policy.
Excuse me.
Policy.
Excuse me!
Who has the floor? I've got my five minutes to speak, unless you're going to give me.
But you're not talking on the item.
Yes, I am. I'm going to policy next, it's on the agenda.
If, if Foodie would mind having a point of information, a question, all right? Is a topic under Superintendent's Report an agenda item or not? Yes. Then budget is on the agenda? No, no, that's, that's not. It has to be on what the Superintendent specifically talked about, or it has to be on a resolution item in this particular section. There's no restrictions on the next section for anything, so.
On policy, I see that you're, you're abolishing some of the policies that were put into effect early on with regards to students coming a little bit late to class. You're abolishing that, and I guess going back to the old ways, because I see no reference of it in the policies that you have listed online. I'm a little dismayed that why you would do that, but I guess you guys can, can do what you want, but you, you're going to hold the students to a higher standard than you hold your own members to. Kids late, you're going to be marked as a cut, where Board members can, can come and go as they please, and, and be disrespectful. as they please and be disrespectful of other Board members, and I'll get to that at the, at the next petitions and requests. The rest I'll, I'll wait till the next time.
Is there anyone else liking to speak before petitions and requests? If not, I need a motion to close petitions and requests.
Move to close petitions and requests.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We need, we need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Personnel, Student Affairs, Mrs. O'Brien is not here. Would you like to do that, Mr. Seiwitz?
Sure, thanks. I'd like to move items number one through 24 under Personnel and Student Affairs.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Hubert?
I got two things. First, number 12, thanking the administration for getting a couple more mathematics teachers for homeschooling. We needed that badly, I understand, so that's great.
Home destruction.
Home destruction, sorry. Long words. Number 13, the grant incentive, is that something that the teacher applied for herself?
Yes.
Well, I would like to say kudos to Mrs. Comerford for working on getting the funding for the things she needed. Paragraphs 19 and 23, it has to do with the miniature golf club. Do I understand, I understood in one paragraph that the advisors are gonna be volunteers?
Correct.
Okay, so that's, the 23 approves the $35 per hour stipend, and the advisors for miniature golf are on that list. Is that in error? Uh, paragraph 24 is at the end? Oh, sorry, paragraph 24. My bad.
Yeah, it is. No, it's volunteer.
Volunteer.
It says volunteer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Two separate, they're two separate items.
The mini golf club is completely voluntary, there's no cost to the board.
I thought those were extension 23, sorry about that. Okay, that's all I've got.
Any other discussion? Mr. Drew?
I just have a question. What's family numeracy?
What number?
Under number...
14.
Family Numeracy Night, it's a...
Family Numeracy Instructor.
Yeah, that would be for, so Family Numeracy Night, it's what we call our, our event. It's an evening event, it's a parent involvement event for celebrating math.
It used to be called Family Math.
That, okay.
I did have another question for Dan. Westbrook School, in paragraph 18, what's Blue Ribbon and Making Strides? What are the two organs for the school?
Blue Ribbon and Making Strides, these are...
Making strides are what can you call them?
Let's see where they're funded. PTA-funded, to be honest with you, I don't know what all these are. They're PTA-funded. They're not through my, my title.
We can find out for you.
I don't know if they're there.
I think the one might be walking.
Yeah, I think the Making Strides is walking. I don't know about Blue Ribbon. Any other discussion?
The Blue Ribbon's a book club.
Great, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, Mrs. Francisco, roll call. Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes, on all, but 16, I'll abstain.
Mr. Hubert?
Yes.
Mr. Seiwitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Dwyer?
I need the hand character first.
Oh, oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. Will?
I would like to move items number 25 and 26 under Personnel and Student Affairs.
Discussion? This again, this is a retirement. Mrs. Benson's been with us for many years, I believe. I don't know how many years, but, is it like 30?
No.
Seventeen?
Seventeen.
Oh, I'm sorry. We wish her well in her retirement. Any other discussion? Mr. Drew?
I have a question. Can we move a teacher from a different area into one of these areas, or if, do they require special certification, or...
We're just talking about a retirement.
Yeah, but you now have an opening, and we're talking about...
You'd have to be a math teacher. There couldn't be, you'd have to, somebody with a math certificate. At the elementary level, you can move a second-grade teacher to third grade. They're generalists. Secondary level, usually your subject's specific. So this would be a math teacher, we would need a math teacher to replace her.
It seems like a real shame to lose a math teacher.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Francisco? Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Hubert?
Yes.
Mr. Seiwitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Dwyer, education?
Okay, I'd like to move items one through six for approval.
I need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to note that it's Music in Our Schools Month, and the resolution is laid before everyone. The, the music in the high school, what night is that, the program?
It's the end of March, yeah. We're still technically one day away from Music in Our Schools Month.
Okay, okay, well, I just, but we have the big program at the high school.
We do, we have a busy month in March. We have a school play that we have later in the month, we have...
March 21st? I just want to remind the public that March, the date of March 21st, it's a great, it's a great night, especially for elementary parents, when they come out and they can see the gate, the range of what happens with your child from listening to that tune at fifth grade to when you see them in the band in the high school in 11th and 12th grade. It's just amazing, and it's a great night to just come out and see our kids at their best. It's a wonderful night, so I just wanted to make a note, a little comment on that tonight, so. Okay, Mrs., any other discussion? Mrs. Francisco? Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Hubert? Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Seiwitz?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
We just voted on everything. Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Dwyer, number seven. Oh, those are hips, that's for after... I have it written.
That's okay.
Budget and Finance.
items one through four under Budget and Finance, please.
Second.
Here's who's responsible for the grant, number one.
I believe that's Mrs. Comerford.
It's the one you just gave.
Okay, so that's a different part of the grant, then.
It's accepting the funds.
Oh, because the other, the other one said $175.
That's what she's getting.
Oh, excellent, okay, great.
There's different components to the grant.
Great, even better. Can you explain the E-Rate Consulting, Inc. contract? What's that for?
Sure, it's, they provide all of the services we need to file the E-Rate application that we have to do annually. The E-Rate application is done through Schools and Library, which is a federal program, and depending on what we put into that grant application, if they approve it, we get a portion of that money that we spend back as a grant.
Thanks, Barbara.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Roll call. Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Seiwitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hubert?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number five under Budget and Finance, please.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Francisco? Mr. Seiwitz?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hubert?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number six under Budget and Finance, please.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Francisco? Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Seiwitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Abstain.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hubert?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
I abstain.
I'd like to move number seven under Budget and Finance, please.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Francisco? Roll call. Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Seiwitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hubert?
Abstain.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I'd like to move items number eight and nine under Budget and Finance, please.
Second.
Roll call. Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew? Mr. Seiwitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hubert?
Abstain to eight, yes and no.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Policy, Mr. Guarino?
Well...
Oh, I'm sorry, there isn't, this is after...
I don't have it either. I don't have it.
I don't have it. Read one?
No, we didn't distribute it yet, I'm waiting until after.
Oh, okay.
That is after executives.
Yeah, okay. Policy, Mr. Guarino?
I'd like to move items one through 21.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Seiwitz?
I agree with Resolution number one in principle. Unfortunately, after speaking to several people about the issue, I do agree with their sentiment that there are legal issues involved with it. However, I wanted to reiterate, I do agree with it in principle. So I will unfortunately be voting yes to it.
I was going to ask if we could separate out some items, and we can ask Mr. Roselli a question. Is the secretary allowed to decline if a Board member asks for a policy to be shown with editing marks?
So since, so we're in public, so I don't want to give legal advice, I will say that Board members should have the information that they need to make a decision on items on the agenda. But I don't want to talk about anything specific because we're in public right now, that we can go to executive session and have a discussion. But Board members should have whatever they feel they need to make a decision if an item is on the agenda.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to table a few things till next meeting. I have a little background to it. In, at the December meeting, Mr. Bailey barked at me, but he was right, about showing the policies that are up for vote on the website with editing marks. And I had never noticed it. Was it on the policy committee? I knew what was in there, so I didn't really check that. And he was absolutely right, though. The public and the Board should have the ability to go in, see what's marked for editing. I sent, the day after that, I think, or maybe two, I sent Dr. Anamon an email asking for that, and nothing ever happened. And then about a week ago, I sent that again, and I didn't get any responses. And on, so on Friday, I asked Barbara to send me editing marks on 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, I think nine of the policies and regulations. Now, I simply don't have the time of day to review an 11-page policy against another 11-page policy, you know, when I have a list of 21 policies to review. It is just, you know, they're not all one-page policies. So I'd like to ask that these particular policies be tabled until the next meeting. And the motion will be for 5,200 dependents, 5,200 dependence regulation, and then obviously, if you're gonna do those, we have to do the 5,200.1 and .2. And I don't have, necessarily have a problem with these things, I just haven't had the ability to, to figure out for sure what we're doing. 7440, school district security, 7441, electric surveillance on school property, 7441 regulation, 5460.1, high school transcripts, that's a regulation, 7101, education adequacy of capital projects, that's a regulation, 8630, emergency school bus procedures, and 5516.01, student tracking devices. So I'd asked for those, and I didn't get the information I need to vote, and I'm asking that those be tabled until I receive that before the next meeting.
Ray, can I... I just want to add one thing. The question as to whether to put the proposed changes on the website for public view really is an entire Board issue, it's not an administrative decision, because that's still what's known as advisory and consultative material, so it's not a public document unless the Board itself wants to make that public. So it's not a decision that Alex or Barbara would make on their own, or one Board member, it would be an entire Board discussion and vote.
Ray, you had a discussion?
Yeah, so I was gonna say, you know, when you brought that up, I happen to agree with it, I, I agree with what you're saying, but I also feel like where we are now, this is what we've done up to this point, I think from this point forward, then we can have that discussion, and I think we can, we can move forward with that.
Any other discussion?
Second.
Second to what?
He made a motion, it needs to be seconded before we discuss it.
Oh, you're second, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, because Mr. Hubert was talking about tabling, and there was no motion on the floor at that point. Okay. So, Ray?
I made a motion to table it, he seconded it.
Which motion, which motion, you tabled the motion, you seconded the motion to table?
Yeah.
Okay, can you just reiterate those policy numbers?
Could you say what numbers they are?
Just the resolution number, maybe?
I, I...
Maybe it's easier to do resolution number?
The number, like 13, 12...
I can run through it, I can. Hold on a second, let me just run through the list and I'll circle it. It's mostly the newer stuff.
Well, I mean, all of the, up, up to item 17 are all second readings.
Yeah, it's mostly 18.
So it would be 18, 19, 20, and 21. So it would be 18, 19, 20, and 21. You have two that you were talking about that were second readings already.
Hold on a second.
I thought he was, it was 13, electronic surveillance.
Yeah, 12 and 13, I believe.
Which is a second reading.
High school transcripts, I think it's number six.
Number seven, you wanted?
And 19, 20.
Tracking devices, seven.
Right? 21, seven, thank you. So attendance, older for attendance, school security, school district security was?
11.
That's 10 and 11. I think that's out of all, okay. So that would be, I don't think we have anything before five, right? No, that would be six, seven, 10, 11, 12, 13, 18, 19, 20, and 21.
So the motion was to table those until next meeting.
Correct.
And you're seconding it. You seconded it. So we do a roll call on that?
Yep.
You want to discuss?
Mr. Bailey.
Not, there's no discussion on a motion. There's no discussion on a motion to table.
Okay.
So we have to just take the vote.
Mr. Bailey.
No.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
No.
Mrs. Fritz.
No.
Mr. Guarino.
No.
Mr. Huber.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
No.
Okay. So that motion did not pass, so now they're all up for vote.
Okay, now you can discuss, you can go to discussion.
Correct.
Mr. Bailey. We don't have anything else.
Well, no, because we're moving forward, right?
I thought you wanted to talk.
That is.
Mr. Huber.
All right, first one, an act of this policy number one. Okay. I'd like to make a motion, well, first, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to that if there, and the plea is up for a position, particularly a new hire, that the administration notify the board by email like we did the last two meetings ago, three meetings ago, so that we can consider that in our voting and be fully informed. It's a transparency issue.
I understand that, but do you want to modify the policy? Or you just want a directive to the administration? You wouldn't need a motion for that.
I'd like it in the policy.
Okay.
So what am I doing?
Well, there was a motion made to.
That's to amend the policy, so it's for an amendment?
Yeah.
Mr. Bailey. Well, he raised his hand to talk, yeah.
I'm not second. But if he's not going to second, there's no discussion, so.
Second.
Mr. Bailey. Talk to me.
President Van Dyke.
Yes.
This meeting has gone so far off track. I have no clue what we're talking about. But I do know one thing. I do know one thing. There's a lot of time and effort, you know, on the part of our staff, our administration, my colleagues on the board that are willing to be doing these policies. Now, these policies are presented before us to be approved at a second reading. It's an important thing that we're doing. It's an important act of the board. And here we are, at this point, trying to apply the brakes to this process. And it's bad, it's inferior boardsmanship. And I'm disappointed because I'm here to support the administration and to support these policies, not to attempt to reinvent them, modify them, follow what you want. So I want that to go on the record. And I would hope that we can see that this vote get taken sooner later so we can move on to other items of importance. What we do here is very, very important. And this is inferior boardsmanship.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I thought, did you have your hand up right? Mr. Huber.
I'm going to ask the chair to please ask the other board members to remain civil to each other.
I think that that's a given.
Yeah, but you didn't say anything.
Okay. Let's, it's noted. Okay, so there's a second on the floor about the amendment. We need to do a roll call, correct?
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
Which was to include in the policy language that requires the administration to email to board members whether a new hire or is a relative of the current.
Right.
On the motion to amend?
I'm allowed to.
On the motion to amend?
Yes. I'm just going to say that this is a vote on transparency. So pretty much if we vote against this, it means that we want to be rightfully ignorant of what we're voting on. Thank you.
Mr. Bailey.
My colleague hopefully is speaking for himself because to came with a broad brush that this board is about to vote for something and render it non-transparent, is that the word? Non-transparent. That's not what I'm doing. That's not what none of us, that's not what I do. And that's what I don't think most of my colleagues do. So I take the exception to these flippant remarks to fly around here and kind of get attached to the board as a whole.
Okay.
Okay.
Roll call, please. And it's on the amendment.
Just on the amendment.
Just on the amendment.
On the motion to amend the policy. Mr. Bailey.
No.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
No.
Mrs. Fritz. No. Mr. Guarino.
No.
Mr. Huber.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
No.
So that did not pass. We are back to the regular agenda items.
Mr. Huber.
Yeah, could you guys specifically describe what the change is to number six, the regulation for high school transcripts?
There was any, it should be in the policy minutes. There were some minor revisions to that one. I don't have the policy.
The policy minutes don't say specifically. They don't have a vague comment.
I'd have to look it up. This is part of this regular Strauss update.
Well, that's what I'm asking. That somebody tell me what the change is. Was this Strauss estimate?
Correct.
No, I don't have them with me.
All right, let's go on to number seven.
It's a second reading. It's not, it's not the first reading. We had them when we were here for the first reading.
All right, let's go on to number seven.
Sure.
Anybody know what the change to the student tracking devices is?
Yes, that was because of the.
Number seven, yes, this is a new policy, actually. There's been a growth with technology devices, tracking devices that children can now have, parents can buy for their child to clip on their bookbag, put in their back pocket. If we have some children who are runners, you know, they might get off the bus and take off in a running direction. So the tracking devices allows parents to track their child in real time with the device on the child and an app on the parent's phone. So this policy really just spells out when and how they can be used in a school. So children will be allowed to have them on them. However, they cannot be recording devices, either video or audio. So they're solely used for parents to track their child. Some of these devices have audio/video capabilities. This policy does not allow for that. It just allows the tracking of the child.
So I know for a fact that phones have an app. So are we allowing them to have their phone on with them all time, at all times, if it has the app on it for the parents to track where they are?
I think the app is on the parent's phone and the device is on the student's bookbag or on their hip.
Yeah, but the device is the, is the student's phone.
Not necessarily. It could be a separate device.
It can be. I'm asking how we treat that.
They're allowed to have tracking devices. They are not allowed to use it for recording purposes. So most of these are really primary grades, children who are too young, typically too young to have phones.
And I know high school students that have it on their.
That's a parent issue.
So, I'm sorry, does anybody else have something? Let's try to keep going.
Go ahead.
Okay, number 10. And 11. Policy regulation, how is that adjusted? Is that a Strauss estimate also?
Yes, there was a large Strauss estimate updated policy drop probably maybe six weeks ago. And this was part of it. All those ones in a row, all the second readings are pretty much the new Strauss updates.
Well, that's school security. I'm guessing we're going to be looking at that again pretty soon, anyway.
Sure.
Number 12, electronic surveillance. Number 12 and 13 is electronic surveillance in school buildings and out of school grounds. Policy and regulation looks, is that Strauss estimate also? And is that?
Yeah, these all are.
Do you know what that change is?
I don't have it here. We had it here last week. I'm always, just sort of boards aware, I'm always available in my office during the week if you want to review policies with me over the phone, via email. I don't know that now is the best time for all this, but.
They're not here because they're the second reading, so.
Yeah, they're in the board member's page, and you'll have hard copies as well.
Anything else?
Yeah, so even if they're in my system, you could take the one. Because you can't go back and forth. All right, so on the first reading items, the attendance policies, this is all one discussion. So I'm going to say 18 through 21. I saw that we have the policy 5,200, which was the original policy. And 5,201, which was the lower grades for attendance in tardiness. And 5,200.2, which was attendance in tardiness for the high schools. And I see that we're keeping 5,200. And we're getting rid of the two adjustments in 5,200.1 and 5,200.2. And I saw that you took a page or so from, I think, 5,200.2 and added it to 5,200, maybe in the regulation?
Yes.
I have questions about that. It seems like there were some things, and I wasn't able to compare it against the previous policy. Didn't have time to do that. But I did read it. And it looks like it's opening it up, opening up everything for discretion, discretionary penalties for whatever it may be, and tightening a couple of things up and making them more punitive. Could you tell me specifically what the differences are now?
Sure.
And I understand about cleaning up the policies. It was kind of cumbersome the way it was. So I don't disagree with.
Some of it merged together because of redundancy.
In general, cleaning up and simplifying it a bit. But it seems like it made it applicable, where you took the high school standards and made it applicable to all grades, and tightened some things up and made them tougher when we know that, you know, incoming students at the high school have a lot of difficulty navigating, especially since, you know, nobody takes into consideration where their locker is and where their classes are and such.
Freshman seminar does. Freshman seminar helps support.
Yeah, but freshman seminar.
With that profit.
Well, this tightens up the grace period to five days, Dan. It's only five days. Freshman seminar is not.
Well, policy, resolution number 20, policy 5,200.1. We don't have a tardiness problem at K8. These children walk to class typically at the K6 level. And Macabre is a very small building. But the attendance policy 5,200.1 was in contrast to these new state regulations. So we wanted to abolish that. We don't believe we have a tardiness issue at those levels. For the next policy, resolution 21, policy 5,200.2, we abolished it. However, we did take a few paragraphs from that and insert it into another regulation. So the new, the old policy allowed for a 20-minute grace period to class, which is, you know, 50% of the class. So we were finding some students who were 18, 19 minutes late to class, and it was a tardy. And then that's, there's also a four-minute, four or five-minute, four-minute passing time in between periods. So that's on top of that, so.
That gave, that gave students 24 minutes to get from one class to the other.
Yeah, that was, some students, not many, but some students were really taking some liberties they probably shouldn't have been. So this new policy cuts that 20 minutes down to five. But again, it still includes the four minutes of regular passing time.
So it's nine minutes total.
In essence, you have nine minutes to go from point A to point B in a high school. And if Ms. McIntyre were here, she would say that that's more than enough time.
Could you tell us about what the state regulation was that conflicted?
State regulations now limit very much how you can excuse an absence. So a doctor's note doesn't excuse an absence for a child. If you're chronically ill, if you're chronically absent, I should say. You're absent 10% of the year, so 18 or more absences, you're considered chronically absent. And it counts as a checkmark against the district. I think we discussed this briefly, the new S.A. regulation. So the state wants to know if you're in school or if you're not in school. The only excuse absences are take your child to work day is a very limited number. So this policy said basically, so long as your mom called, it was excused. So you could be absent 40 times and have it excused every single time. But the state was marking our children as chronically absent. So we wanted to tighten that up a little bit and really make it more consistent with one another.
So this change was driven by, the administration brought this up, not really?
Yes, we're really looking to, again, this is a major, the school performance reports came out probably in mid-January or early February. And that's one of the indicators now. I think it's weighted 15 or 20% how your school, how your district is graded in this document, and student attendance is now a large component of that. So we're looking to make some improvements in that area. And we want to make sure our children are in school every day.
We don't necessarily see that it gotcha. It's more of a proactive approach to get students into school so that the teachers can instruct them for the time that they're, that they're there.
Yeah. Well, that's not actually the problem I have with it. Right now, what I'm looking at here is, one, I'd like to see Macabre differentiate from this because I don't think this would work well for Macabre. And two, I, the high school has a history of consistency problems with their discipline. And leaving it discretionary with the history we've got over there bothers me. So I'd really like and ask that if the policy committee would be willing to take this back, talk about it, maybe fine-tune it a little bit more.
Right.
I just want to get clarified, why does it not work for Mac? Is your mind? I'm just, I don't know, and I get, I'm just saying. I know when I went to Mac, we had three minutes to get to class. Yeah, well.
And you did it.
It's not the time to get to class. It's not the time to get to class. It's the, it's the fact that if you're late for, you know, a reason, it's a cut. It just seems a little bit heavy for that age group. We had that, too. Okay.
It's accountability.
Well, let me, let me just give you my perspective because I was, I was part of the process. Many years ago, when I was on the board, Mrs. Tow and I, and I, maybe I shouldn't even mention her at the, because I'm, but anyhow, we're two board members. An issue came up that kids were having a tough time to get to class. And we're thinking, four minutes should be enough time for them to get to class. So Mrs. Tow and I go to the high school, and we, we change classes with the kids. At that point, there were probably 1,500 kids. I have a feeling Liz was probably in the building at the time. And Mrs. Tow and I were able to get to all of our class, we ran a schedule, and we were able to get all of our classes in four minutes. These two people that really had no knowledge of the building or anything. So to me, when I looked at this, 20 minutes seemed a ridiculous amount of time. Plus, I'm thinking of the contact time that the students are getting in the class. If they're out of there, even if it's for three lates, they're losing 60 minutes of class. And I, that kind of bothered me. They're getting 24 minutes of travel time to get to a class? Even as a freshman, I think that that is an excessive amount of time, myself. So then we're sitting there saying, well, of course, when you're a freshman and you're new to the school, maybe you do need a little time. But now you're giving them nine minutes. Nine minutes is a long time to walk through those halls. So I think we're being more than.
Well. Yeah, I'm sorry. I believe, if I'm recalling correctly, the previous policy, it was.
20 minutes.
Late was under five minutes. And then it was a cut if it was, if they were 15 minutes late. So it was, it was a graduated issue. So if they were, if they were.
This reads 20 minutes late, the old policy.
20 minutes for a late or for a cut?
It says tardiness to class of 20 minutes or more shall be counted as a cut from that class.
Right.
20 minutes.
Right, now we reduced it as a cut to five. So it's like they missed that class purposely.
They have nine minutes.
Well, that counts punitively as if they missed that class purposely. Okay, there's no exception for medical issues or anything else.
There are exceptions for medical issues. I want to clarify that if somebody has an IEP or a 504 or an individual health plan, that those trump or crutches or any other kind of plan that that would allow them to be able to have a different plan than the general population. So we would be able to still accommodate those.
I know of somebody who had crutches. They gave her three extra minutes to get across the entire school filled with students. It wasn't enough.
I, I don't believe that that happens now because, well, okay.
She's still in the high school. So it's, it's got to be within the last couple of years.
Let's, let, can I call the question at this point?
Yeah.
I'd like to call the question, please. Mrs. Francisco will call, please.
I didn't get a chance to.
I'm sorry, Mr. Drew.
It's too late.
I called the question.
It's not. You have a right to two, two discuss.
I'm, I'm fine.
Could you please be the attorney?
I said, the question has been called.
Oh, thank you.
You were looking at us here?
Yep.
Mr. Huber.
No to number one, no to 18 through 21. Yes to the others.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes to numbers one through 17, no for 18 through 21.
Mr. Drew.
No to one, yes to two through 17, no to 18 to 21.
Mr. Guarino.
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Special committees. Mr. Guarino.
Sorry, what's that?
We're under special committees, Parks and Rec.
Oh, Parks and Rec. We do not have a quorum.
Oh.
For Parks and Rec, and they are in search of a, fortunately, a new rec director. Nobody in this one.
Okay. Uh, safety, uh, we had a meeting. It just happened to fall on the day after the shooting, um, in Florida. There, I, I felt it was a very good meeting, the, we had the police there, and there, there was a lot of discussion. Um, we will have another meeting coming up in March, I believe the end of March is, they're scheduled, and they're coming back because there's some discussion about, uh, the different security policies that we want to change. Uh, student, uh, superintendent's roundtable, Mrs. Dwyer.
Okay, some of the highlights. Parents were concerned about how much time teachers had to put the grades on the portal, and Dr. Anamon is addressing that. Um, Dr. Anamon is looking into opening SAC to parents, um, of school, for school clubs, but whose kids are not currently involved in SAC. Um, there's issues with the current cursive program, and Dr. McQuade explained a systematic approach. There's ongoing training of the Orton-Gillingham reading program, and the biggest question of, again, was the voting at PK. Um, I believe we still have not heard from the township administrator regarding this, and as, as it comes, you know, we're getting closer, we need to have a decision. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Next meeting is Thursday?
Thursday.
Right. And I will be attending for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The State County School Boards. Um, I attended the, the county meeting, uh, at the Brownstone on the 5th. Uh, there was, uh, basically a discussion about the new government, the, the new governor. They still didn't have, they, they still didn't have a picture of what is going to happen with the Department of Education right now at that point in time, and they didn't have an answer either on state aid. They had the same kind of questions that all the districts were, um, asking. New Jersey School Boards, that's also me. Um, Mrs. Dwyer and I will be attending a conference in April, um, leadership conference, um, through, uh, New Jersey School Boards. And we'll move on to legislative. Mr. Huber.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you know if there's any upcoming topics on school security?
There was something that was on there about, about security, but I thought it was, it was like right before all of this happened.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. It, it, it like fell, like on the, it was like February 9.
Would you mind acquiring?
Sure. Yeah, yeah. I'll definitely talk to Ray. Yeah.
All right.
Legislative?
Okay. Sorry, give me one second. All right, there's quite a bit, so as we discussed before the meeting, I'm going to do the most recent stuff tonight and go back in time at future meetings because it's just too much volume for one meeting. All right, so, uh, at the last, uh, the first voting session of 2018, uh, 2019 legislative session, uh, the Assembly passed a package of bills, uh, intended to prevent sexual abuse, misconduct, and harassment among public school employees and students. Uh, three of the bills direct school districts to incorporate, uh, education into the curriculum, uh, while, uh, fourth, it requires schools to ensure job outfits have no history of sexual abuse or misconduct before they're hired. Okay? So going through those, um, I'm just going to say first, second, third, and fourth. They're not written in any particular order. Um, the first requires, um, districts to incorporate age-appropriate sexual abuse and assault awareness and prevention education in grades preschool to 12. Um, and that's supposed to be put into the health and phys ed curriculum. Amongst other things, the bill also provides that a teaching staff member may satisfy each professional development cycle or, uh, one or more hours of the professional development requirement established by the State Board of Education through participation in training programs on sexual abuse and assault awareness prevention. So they're looking to, um, it's for teachers to get educated on that as well. Um, the next one has to do with sexting, and it asks the Board of Education to include instruction on social, emotional, and legal consequences of distributing sexually explicit I don't think I need to elaborate too much on that. Third one is another thing, another bill that has to do with sexual contact consent instruction, sorry, sexual consent instruction. And it requires, um, school district to incorporate instruction in grades six to 12 on the law and meaning of, of consent for physical contact and sexual activity. Uh, they wanted you to, want us to put in that health and phys ed as well. Um, and it's designed to increase discussion and awareness that consent is required before any of those sorts of activities and the social, emotional, and relationship impact surrounding sexuality. The last one, uh, requires school districts to review employment history of prospective employees to ascertain allegations of child, child abuse or sexual misconduct. And it explicitly prohibits employers from hiring a person serving the position that has direct contact with students unless the court, employer conducts, conducts the review and employment history of the applicants by contacting former and current employers and requesting information regarding child abuse and sexual misconduct allegations. It requires that the district ask the certain three questions of the candidate, and then, uh, basically go back to the employers and double check all that stuff. Okay?
And the employers are going to give them that information?
Uh, it's in here that basically the, the employers are not going to be able to have any kind of confidentiality in their separation agreements anymore to prevent that. It's, they're going to be, they're going to be unable to do that. Um, and they can't suppress that information, so they're going to have to. Okay? Um, let me see. Uh, Dr. Anamon already talked about the extension, two-week extension on the, on the budget for the new governor. Um, and the last thing is not, not something that's been passed yet, but, uh, the committee advanced the repeal of the superintendent salary cap, and that's moving along in the process as we kind of expected it to. And that's it for legislative for tonight.
Okay. Mrs. O'Brien is not here tonight. Mr. S, uh, you're a technology, I'm sorry, you know, I have a highlight thing around it. That's why I didn't say it.
No, that's fine, thank you. Uh, we had a first technology oversight committee meeting, um, the first one, I think that's been held in quite some time. Huber, Huber's did a great job of pulling together kind of state of the state of where things are in the district as far as our technology goes. Um, some of the things that, um, we talked about that need addressing are, um, our voice, the voice over internet protocol. Um, we need to expand our existing switch infrastructure and the wiring due to the age of our existing technology. Um, we need to invest in new edge switches. These don't quiz me on exactly all the different ones. Uh, these will connect, basically connect all the schools to each other. Uh, we need to cable and switches internally to support the, the voice system. Our phone system is also coming to the end of its life. Um, parts and replacements can take days or weeks. I think there was an issue not too long ago. So that's something else that we need to be looking at. Um, the servers are also very, very old. They're stretched pretty thin and can't really support the district the way it needs to, and they need to be replaced. Um, and as I mentioned earlier in the agenda, we'll be trying to use the E rate, which is the federal rebate, whenever and wherever possible, to lower costs. Um, but I think the way it works is you don't really find out what you get back on that until later, so we have to kind of budget, budget now, um, kind of without taking that into consideration. Dingsand, they're, they're currently assessing the different vendors and looking at pricing and packages, and that has been built into the new budget. Um, they are looking at that, but no final definition, uh, decisions have been made yet, and we don't have another meeting scheduled quite yet.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Seidowitz.
Okay, I met with Councilmen McGinnis and Sigarino. And, uh, we spoke about several items, first being the budget, and, uh, I was asked by the board to relay what their expectations were for their budget, and they are expecting to try to get to zero or as close to zero as possible, and they'd like to see us do the same. Um, they asked questions such as how much debt do we have, and I believe that's in the audit. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, what?
How much debt we currently hold.
Um, $6.5 million.
Okay, that's the answer, thank you.
Less the payments that we made this year.
Thank you. Um, they wanted us to be reminded that ratables in the township are going down and that the population is continuing to decrease. And, uh, lastly, for the budget, they believe that the county at this point may have a decrease in their taxation, in their tax. Um, we spoke about school security, and we bounced around ideas about armed guards and any of, anybody related to that, and we talked, talked about the different classes of officers. Um, it led me to opening up a dialogue with, uh, Chief Storebeck to find out if there are any options that we have that maybe he could discuss with the board at some point. Um, they, the councilmen asked if we had a list of safety concerns that we would like to see addressed, and that was the bulk of school security. We spoke about Hillcrest, and they would, they were asking what Hillcrest is zoned as. I didn't have a definitive answer for that.
Shouldn't they know that? They, they should know. They're the town.
I'm just a messenger.
No, I'm just saying.
You're the zoning officer.
They may be zoning.
Uh, they did say that if a business were to go into Hillcrest, the council can offer tax abatements as incentives to get somebody into the building. Um, they also, uh, spoke about the ideas that were discussed at the joint meeting of having a possible satellite hospital, YMCA, a recreation complex, possibly knocking down the building. So obviously, all that is in the air, and that's a matter of time. And in, under old business, I'm sure we'll find out a little more information as to where we are standing. And future areas of co, uh, cooperation, uh, include the Wallace Estates and pending what the results of the LGVA are, and the possibility of an ESIF down the line, which is an energy-saving improvement program.
Thank you.
Uh, we would, you're welcome. They keep coming, right? Depending the results of that, they would like to see part of the field, as we discussed, be converted into a solar farm, and the possibilities of perhaps turning Wallace into a sports field as well. And those are things that we can obviously discuss down the line, and I'd like to hear more from the board regarding your thoughts on the issues. That way I can bring it back. Uh, we plan to meet as frequently as once a month, and I will report back, and hopefully that's the case.
Maybe you can ask them about the voting.
Absolutely, that is now on the list.
Good. Thank you, Will.
You're welcome.
Mr. Huber Casa.
Okay. All right, at the last CASA meeting on February 12th, it was an open meeting, and it was very nice to see Linda and Terry there. Um, I hope you found it interesting and eye-opening.
I was on it for years.
It's a little different.
Yeah, it's a lot different.
Okay, so, um, at that meeting, we, we had two new, uh, youth representatives that came onto the committee. Uh, they're juniors at West Milford High School, I'm very happy to hear, so they, they can have some longevity to be on there more than one year. We had a couple of seniors, uh, last year, or year before, last year, and their insight was really helpful to the old folks on the CASA committee and all of us. And, um, so I'd like to say thank you and kudos to, uh, Olivia D. and Kelsey M. I'm not going to say their last names on, on TV.
Yeah, they were good.
And, um, Ada Eric is going to be applying for a vacancy in the citizenship, uh, position. There's a certain number of positions with particular titles and requirements that are preferred to meet certain grant requirements that we're trying to get, to get a, a grant for West Milford Township to, uh, really promote, uh, various drug prevention programs and, uh, you know, various, uh, abuse, uh, programs that are, uh, would be really helpful to the citizens room. Let me see. Uh, at the meeting, say, Alliance Coordinator Donna Huber presented a film about what the Alliance community, uh, is and what prevention, you know, and about prevention. Let me see. Uh, the community awareness dinner was discussed, and that's going to be on May 19th at the West Milford Library. The topic is going to be what communities need to know in the age of legalized marijuana. And, um, for anybody in the township, it's open to everybody, and it's also open to people not in the township. Um, but you need to register, and they need a head count for the food, and so it's, it's a free meal and some good information. Um, I've been to them for the last few years, and, uh, they have always been quality information from a guest speaker that is very qualified. Um, we're going to work on the DFC grant application. That's the large grant that I was just talking about. Um, the Director of Tech, the school superintendent, for allowing CASA to put a survey out, um, that helped CASA by putting some additional questions on it that had to do with, uh, students' exposure to drugs and, and at home and in school or whatever. And, um, it, it's kind of eye-opening, some of those, that information, if you get it. The Hidden in Plain Sight Program was scheduled for April 4th. It's now going to be rescheduled for April 30th, which, correct me if I'm wrong, I think is a Monday?
I don't think we finalized the reschedule date.
The presenter had it canceled on us from April 4, April 4th. We're working on our new date, but I don't think we're finalized yet.
Okay, that's the one floated tentatively then.
Yeah.
That is a Monday.
All right. Um, there's a, uh, the Lions Health Fair, uh, which is at the Recreation Center, is scheduled for May 12th. Um, there's going to be, uh, another pre-prom discussion, which went very well last year. I think it was last year was the first time, and, uh, we got very good feedback on that, and that's going to be covered by Kelly Hart on June 1st with the senior class. And, um, the high school health fair is going to be on June 5th. Um, and the CASA will have a booth at all the, all of these health fairs, you know, with information for anybody who wants it. Um, and there was some general discussion about vaping, um, which I'm going to have more about that later on in the meeting anyway.
Mrs. Van Dyke? I'm sorry, I left something out of my report.
Okay.
If I may.
Okay, let me just finish up with Mr. Huber, and we'll come back.
Fine, bye.
I, I just have one thing. I, I believe March 13th is the Narcon training that people can, um, sign up for, if they're interested.
I don't know if that's in the minutes.
It is March 13th. So if, if anybody's interested in that, that's a, it's, it's definitely a good idea.
Great, thank you for that. I have to double check.
Okay, thank you. Will, what did you forget?
My apologies. Um, the township, the councilman would be supportive of a joint venture to have a five-year program to update the, uh, elementary school fields that we have. So that is a topic that, uh, will probably be discussed in future meetings.
Well, that's good. That's good. Sorry, Deb. I guess we're, move on to old business. I need a motion, no, old business. Uh, Mrs. Francisco, you have Hillcrest on here in their old business?
Uh, these are items, I believe, that came from last month. Um, the RFI that we did put into the newspaper is due back tomorrow. I have not gotten any inquiries for any additional information, so I'm not quite sure if we'll get anything back. Um, the LGEA, they're in the process of doing the walkthroughs. They started it. It's about a 14-day process. Um, they're here, uh, usually one day a week, so it'll be, uh, a period of time yet before they complete everything. And the UGL water remediation project has been completed. Um, we're waiting for the results of the, um, the latest test, but we are now compliant. Uh, so the aeration, uh, program that was put into place, um, has worked, and, um, we're just in the process now of providing the DEP with all the information that they're requesting so that they can, uh, give us their sale of approval.
Oh, good, very good.
Mrs. Van Dyke, a question for Mr. Zelling. So after the RFI is finished on the 28th, at that point, the board is able to seek a commercial realtor?
No. I mean, we could decide to do that, but there's a process that we have to go through. This RFI was just to see if any nonprofits or public entities wanted the building and what they would do with it. We could still declare it, you know, and give it to them, to somebody if they wanted it, if it's a nonprofit. Or we would have to pass a resolution to get a commercial entity to come in and market the building. So, but we have to follow the process and get some approvals from the state on that first, basically to give it away to a nonprofit, we could just do it.
Mr. Zelling, how would that occur to come about doing the right thing for the state to satisfy their requirements?
So we would have to pass a resolution to do that. I would have to send in some documents, as would Mrs. Francisco, to the state to get their approval to get rid of the building off of our rolls or whatever you want to call it. And then we would have to put a competitive contract proposal out to get a realtor to do that. We would have to put the building out for a bid to see who would come in and give us the highest price for it. And if we didn't get the price we wanted, then we can go to a realtor anyway and say we want you to list the building, but we have to first offer it in a bid to the public.
And we can do this as early as next month?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
I mean, the process would have to start then.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can you, can we rent a portion of that building to a nonprofit entity in the short term?
Sure.
So like the new life section of the building is like the best, the most usable part of the building?
We could rent it.
If there was a nonprofit that wanted to rent it month by month?
We could do that. I guess it would depend on whether our building could handle it and whether we would have every other part of the building prepared for it for the winter that comes or whatever by the time we do it. But yeah, we could rent it.
Nicole?
If we go the commercial route, are we able to parcel it up to keep, you know, I know that there's, the building piece and the fields piece is a big concern for people in town, are we able to parcel it off that way or does it have to be in its entirety?
No, we could sell it however we wanted to. I guess the question is, would the interest be there if it was parceled up?
Right, I'm curious.
Mr. Huber?
May I comment?
Sure.
All right. One of the reasons why we wanted to do the RFI with nonprofits is that it would be much easier for us to say, well, you get this, but with the restriction that you have to keep that sports field or whatever, you know, it just made it easier to do that.
Well, we could do it if we wanted to sell the building, we could say that. Or we could sell part of it or whatever it is, but the question is who would be interested in it.
But a nonprofit, like a Y or something, probably would be happy to have a sports field.
Yeah, I wasn't involved just in a sale like this in another district where they sold the administration building, which had a baseball field on the back. And that was a big sticking point as to whether there would be any interest in the property. So I've seen it happen before, I don't know what will happen here.
Anything else? Mr. Drew, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. You're so quiet.
I'm sorry, I keep hiding you.
Yeah.
I guess where it is.
I'll just jump out, maybe I need a robot.
Maybe I'll get you a little flash or something.
Couple of questions, I think these are old business regarding the budget. Ms. Francisco, if we do a bond, we receive state reimbursement for part of that, what sort of percentages are reimbursement for bonds?
With the roof referendum that we did, we're eligible for about 40%.
Does it change depending on what we're doing?
I'm not quite sure if the Department of Education has the ability to exclude certain items from the referendum and whether or not they're educationally, you know, for educational adequacy.
Does the percentage change depending on how long the bond is or is it just always 40%?
No, it's always 40%.
They, just to clarify, they can come back and say, we approve this part, this portion and not this portion. So there are some things that they would approve and some that they wouldn't.
Yeah, when I built the school about 10 years ago and they, you know, 40% came back on the building, but not a second gym and things like that. So there were some exclusions in the referendum.
And one other question, when we did the open meeting regarding the budget, had we made the assumption that we'd have as much money from the state as last year? And of course, one has no idea at all. What was the potential tax increase in that budget we discussed?
The draft budget that you received had no, no information at all on the debt service portion of anything. So at this point, everything is still up in the air. So we haven't, we haven't come up with any kind of tax implication at this point. We want, we're waiting for more information to come in so that we can finite it, make it more finite.
Forgive me, but I could have sworn I saw something that proposed a likely 3.5% tax increase.
Right. Yeah, but that, that's determined by the ratables in the community. That's.
It's a tax levy, but we don't know the debt service, we don't know what the ratables are going to be. That's the other part of that equation.
Since, since we're not even going to be able to get the preliminary budget together until the 20th, we're not really going to have answers or even be able to make decisions on anything until we know the answers.
Like I said last meeting, can't really consider that too much until they know what your income is.
Right, and we have to wait, we really have to wait. So I don't think any of us have an idea of what, what it's going to be or how we're going to do it.
But, but we sent a letter to the community saying we thought the budget was going to be a certain amount. We're certain enough of that to send a letter?
We haven't sent anything out.
It was, Dr. Allen sent a blog post.
A blog?
That was, it said that there's a modest increase of 1.25% to our budget, but it didn't say that there was a proposed tax increase of 3.5%. So, and there's.
Because we don't, we don't know that.
There's no relation to that, is there?
Well, there's still a lot of.
There's a relation between the one and quarter to the three and a half because we don't know what our income is yet.
Right.
Right, that was basically as of last week, based on all our estimates. We estimated our state aid at a certain number. We don't know if that estimate's going to be correct. We won't know for two more weeks. We estimated our health benefits cost at 11.5 million, it might be 11.3, it might be 11.7. So there's a lot of other variables. So as of last week, tentatively, the budget increase was 1.25%, tentatively. That could change, it could go to 2%, it could go to 0.9%. It could change in any direction based on variables that we have no control over. So at this point, it's a little frustrating. We normally have this information by now, but this is our election year, our new transition year for the governor, so we don't. So typically, once every eight years, we have this new compressed timeline and the other seven years, we have a more typical timeline. So it's just this year. So next year, we won't have the same situation.
And you're welcome. Any other discussion under old business? Mr. Siewitz?
I have a statement. For 2017, I was the Board's New Jersey School Boards Association, or NJSPA liaison. For those that don't know, NJSPA is a training, advocacy, and information group that supports New Jersey school boards. I took my role seriously and I took off many workdays and weekends to attend sessions and report back to the board what I learned and promoted what I thought would further the board as a whole. In the course of being the liaison, I attended a training session entitled School Safety and Security Conference. During the conference, there were guest speakers that talked about the assortment of issues facing school districts in the here and now. Following this, there were breakout sessions. One of those sessions was about emergency lockdowns, are you prepared? It was hosted by a company called Eastern Datacom. I was interested in this topic because I felt the board would be most interested in hearing a report about it. Eastern Datacom presented a lockdown system that is tied in with a communication system. It was greatly informative and impressive and a light bulb went off. Not only were they presenting an emergency lockdown system, but the administration had recently informed the Budget and Finance Committee that they would be looking into replacing their phone and communications infrastructure. It was killing two birds with one stone to have Eastern Datacom present. I came back to the board during a regular meeting, gave my report, and suggested we have Eastern Datacom present to the board because it covered the two issues of student safety and the communication need. My request was referred to the Budget and Finance Committee. During the summer, Eastern Datacom presented themselves to the committee, but their presentation was greatly cut short and defeated my personal intent of having them come. I've heard nothing about it since. I brought up this company again last week and emailed the administration and board president. I have not received any response from the administration and Mrs. Van Dyke suggested Eastern Datacom present to the safety committee. With all due respect, I shirk when I hear the word committee because I've learned that in a couple of months, all the hours you spend working on committee assignments can be ignored or overturned. Worse yet, the safety committee, formerly led by Mr. Bailey, has not had a report or meeting in about two years. In my opinion, the board as a whole should view the presentation and be informed about the possible options available to make our schools as safe as possible. To be clear, the presentation was amazing. We don't have to commit, but we should know all of our options. The safety of our kids deserve our time.
Thank you, Mr. Siewitz, and I did speak with you today and I followed up on it after we talked. And one of the reasons that it wasn't followed up on was the technology portion of it because we weren't ready to even take on somebody until the infrastructure was done, which I did not understand. Now, I was not here last year, so I don't know why it didn't go to where it went, but I think once we get past the budget and we see where the technology lies, we'll have a better answer. And I would poll the board sitting here, if they want to have the, these people come and present to the board, we can more than willingly have them come.
Can we still poll now?
Sure, yeah. Once we, once we know if we could, if we don't have the infrastructure to support it, we're probably kind of, you know.
Well, it's a system that we're just looking at as a matter of having the information. We're not tied to taking upon the project, but knowing what this system does and what capabilities it had regarding a lockdown situation, I felt was very important, obviously, now more than ever, just after the recent events in Florida, so.
Yes, Mr. Huber?
There are a lot of solutions out there right now that are basically invented by some of the teachers that, you know.
Yes, I have seen them.
And a lot of them are low-tech. It's not like we need infrastructure for it. They're made, they're set up and made to work.
For his, it had to do with the phone system, so it does. That, that's why I said it because, you know.
We are looking at the phone system. We had a tech oversight committee meeting a few weeks ago, so Mr. Altair did present us with a comprehensive overview of what we need, what we'd like to have, but then what we absolutely need. And that's, to me, that's sort of step one is getting the wiring, the cabling, finding out the, finding out which phone to buy is like the last thing you do, I think getting all the background information. So there's a lot of companies that do what Eastern Datacom does, shared 911, there's a lot of vendors that make, you know, a very comparable product. I don't know which is the best or second best, but it definitely is something we should look into. I do want to correct, you know, we do have quarterly district security team meetings, four, sometimes five times a year. We do have monthly meetings with the administrative council where school security is discussed once a month with our administrative team and then typically once a marking period with the broader group.
We are, we are going to be.
We just met probably a week ago, maybe two weeks ago.
We will be meeting again at the end of March.
So every, we have a district plan and then we also have individual school plans for each individual school. The contents of the plan, we do not publicize what our procedures are for lockdowns, what our procedures are for sheltered place, where is our reunification site, things of that nature, we keep confidential. We do do 10 drills per year, that's one per month, not including fire drills. We do 10 school security drills per month and we do all the same drills every month. So for example, if September is a shelter in place, all the schools do a shelter in place. If October is a bomb threat, all the schools do a bomb threat. And then when we have our monthly meetings, we debrief, we have our police department participate in all these drills. So immediately after the drill ends, we brief with the police, they tell us what they saw, what, that they liked, what they saw that they didn't like, what they didn't see perhaps, and we make corrections for the next time. So we are constantly reviewing our plans. We have a meeting tomorrow with my administrative team, we'll be reviewing some of this as well. Some of it's cost, very costly materials, other times it's just small items, reviewing with parents, when you walk in, you get buzzed into a building, don't hold the door for the person behind you. As rude as that may seem, it's what we can't do. So we have people show up to, they buzz in, we ask who they are, what are you here for? I have a 10 o'clock meeting with the school nurse, we check the school nurse's log, she has a 10 o'clock meeting, they're confirmed, we buzz them in. We want to make sure that door doesn't get held for the person running up the driveway. And that's kind of not what the people in this community are like, they're polite, they naturally want to hold on to, hold the door open, but things like that we're trying to review.
And you are looking at everything now?
Everything, we're looking at, you're experiencing a little bit of the contagion effect right now in our schools statewide, nationwide, something happens and people are hypersensitive. We do, social media plays a big role, unfortunately. We're trying to utilize all the mental health resources that we have in our community, in our county, in our state, and ultimately, we take every threat seriously. So we investigate it no matter how small and we invest, we take care of that every single time, so.
So we do be able to do that in May, have them present?
Sure. Let's, let's, Mr. Drew? Okay, Mr. Drew?
There is, if I remember correctly, in their case, you need to get your phone handsets from them and they've got a particular server piece that may or may not run on our servers or proposed servers. So sometimes the VoIP does integrate with the hardware, it isn't going to, or it makes a difference, the switches, the backbone, that kind of stuff aren't going to matter, but we ought to have some idea of what we're looking at before we make huge decisions in the interim.
Of course, I mean, I wouldn't expect anything less.
They're not independent of each other.
So I, I think what, what the question is, would the rest of the board like to have a presentation from this group? Let's just poll it. All those in favor?
Dr. Allen mentioned there's other companies, I mean, should we have a couple of, maybe a couple of short, you know, a couple of companies?
Yes.
Maybe rather than, probably the same night?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
You, does that sound good?
I'll look into it, you said March, May?
May, yes.
So I'll look into a few companies for one of our May meetings.
The more information, the better decision.
Right.
Can we include low-tech devices as well in that?
Please.
Sure.
I'll tell you about them.
I know what you're talking about, but, okay. Any other old business?
I don't know, it's not necessarily old, but it would segue into security, so.
That's the only place you're going to find that right now, so.
So I mean, I could put it in a new business, but it seems like it would fit now. I got a Honeywell from the high school saying that they were doing a pre-announced lockdown drill to address anxiety of the students. Not sure how that would make them less anxious, but that having been said, I've heard a lot of talk about lockdown drills, okay, lockdown, 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 but I've been doing a little research lately and I'm starting to believe that lockdown isn't what the optimum is considered for student training these days. There's active shooter readiness training that a lot of schools do with the students. As a matter of fact, I think even Parkland already had this, so I don't know, you know, but it involves three things, a three-pronged strategy for dealing with active shooters. I think it would be great combined with some of the low-tech possibilities, it would be a budget outlay because these low-tech things are per classroom, every classroom would have to be equipped. So, but I'm wondering, do we have any active shooter training at all and have, if not, have you looked into it?
Yes, we train all our staff annually and like I said, we run 10 drills a month. A couple of them are, probably two are probably active shooter drills.
But this is student training. Do you have active shooter training for the students?
Internal and external threat.
Okay.
There are also other things that they're talking about in the safety committee that address some of exactly what you were talking about.
Is that at the high school or in faculty? I know it's not in faculty.
My understanding is also.
Mr. Ray, district one.
Oh, my son, my son has no knowledge of that. I asked him. He's got no knowledge of any active shooting, he said they just lock down, they just, you know, shelter in place, that's the only thing that they do in faculty.
Maybe they don't call it that.
No, I asked him about, you know, what they actually do and how to describe it. I didn't go by name.
I also think that the police themselves do active shooter drills in the high school on some. I also think that the police themselves do active shooter drills in the high school on some way. I don't know when, but they're doing them, so according to when we spoke.
Okay, well, I don't know, whatever they're doing in Macapin is not very effective as a whole, yeah, so...
Mr. Citro is the head of the committee.
Okay. And there was something else, I can't think of what it is on security right now. Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody have anything else under old business? If not...
Oh, under, not under old, sorry.
You remember the clause, old business?
Second.
All those in favor? New business, I need a motion, well...
No, you don't.
Okay, discussion, new business?
I have a list, but I'm waiting for somebody else if they have it.
Does anybody have anything?
Okay. First thing on the hit rate, I gave out an article regarding popcorn lung from National Lung Association, American Lung Association, sorry, that had references to CDC articles and so on and so forth. Did anybody read it?
Yes.
You guys, everybody? Basically, what this article says, in a nutshell, okay, so that the public can follow along, is that there are three chemicals in various vaping products which are dangerous. And what brought this to my attention is I was actually at a scout function, and a doctor who was there mentioned, and it was not because I'm a school board member, he just happened to be part of the discussion with the adults. And he said, "Yeah, it's vaping, it's like, you can get popcorn lung really quick." And what popcorn lung is, it's permanent damage to lung tissues that create popcorn-like holes in your lungs. And this particular condition is permanent, it's not reversible, and it mimics the symptoms of CLTD. And so we've got, you know, young kids in the middle school. It's getting, it's starting to gain popularity in the middle school, and it's already in the hallways at the high school. It's really hard to catch because the equipment's very small, and... And there's really not a whole lot of vapor that you smell, although you can get secondhand smoke effect, according to the article and the other research that I looked at. So it's something that I believe we just added to our policy, that it's not acceptable to have it in the school. And it's, as far as state law, I understand that it's the same as cigarettes. You have to be over a certain age to buy them. And I also have done a little bit of inquiry, and I know around town, that almost nobody enforces that. Okay, so I have, I have a three-pronged idea of what I'd like to do, but maybe I should just tell everybody, we could discuss it and then decide what to make motions on, is that all right?
Sure.
Okay. First, I'd really like the administration to do a very quick time type of educational... I don't know if you want to do an assembly or do something, you know. It wouldn't take very long to explain this, to have somebody knowledgeable come in, show some pictures, stuff like that. It would take less than a half an hour, maybe even 15 or 20 minutes at Macapin and the high school. And then in the future, start educating the kids maybe for fifth grade about this so that by the time they get to middle school, they already know about it. All right, and they won't get caught unawares.
Wouldn't this be something that maybe we should do through maybe education? If they want to put it into the health classes?
Yeah, well, yeah, that's something that we should definitely do, but not all, not all the students are gonna have health classes right away. And because it's such an insidious thing that could, you know, it probably depends on the kid, but you can have very quick damage. You know, it's not like smoking where it takes, you know, a number of years and you can actually heal from it. This is something that's a permanent damage in very short order if they get the wrong particular little bottle of liquid. Okay? So that's, that was one thing, but I'd really like to see the schools just do an education thing. I mean, you're not gonna stop all the kids from doing things, but some of them, any kid that hears about it and goes, "Yeah, I'm not gonna do that," or "I'm gonna make sure I don't do it with these little chemicals, with these bad chemicals," you've just saved the kid a lifetime of misery. Okay? Two, add it to the health curriculum, please, okay? Number three is, I was gonna suggest that we, this one I'm definitely gonna make a motion, but I'd like to ask the board to write an official letter to the town council requesting them to pass an ordinance prohibiting the three chemicals and the sale of any products within the town, and to step up enforcement of the age restrictions on buying this stuff. And, let me see.
I think you're on the perfect committee for that. CASA should be the one that should, would, in the past, when we had problems with smoking, CASA was the one that got the council to do the resolutions.
I brought it up to CASA, but there's no reason why we shouldn't do it too. And I'd also like them to step up spot checks for, once they pass that ordinance, do spot checks. Including the ordinance that they'll do spot checks for the products with these three chemicals. This was originally discovered, the reason it's called popcorn lung is because it was originally discovered when factory workers in microwave popcorn factories, they used this chemical to give it the buttery flavor. They've stopped doing that, they've stopped using it since then, but that was about 10 years ago, and that's why they call it popcorn lung.
So if I have popcorn with buttery flavor in my drink?
Not anymore.
Okay.
Okay. So, in any case, so I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion with regard to the letter to the township. Do I need to repeat that?
I got it.
Or has everybody got it? Okay. And, and then, so that's it, I'll do that first. I'll do this.
So you want the ordinance to ban those chemicals, raise the age to buy, and was there a third thing?
And just basically includes, includes spot checking for the first products.
We would do the spot check?
I'm guessing the...
The health officer?
The health officer, please.
The health, the health officer who used to do sick, that they did the smoking if you were underage.
So this would be an official letter on behalf of the board, signed by the board president?
Yes, yes, exactly.
Okay. Can we do, do we have to do a roll call? Okay, a roll call, Mrs. Francisco?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yes, I'm sure you could.
Do we know whether these chemicals are at all used in agricultural industry? Because I don't think we want to pass an ordinance against something that somebody's gonna use to feed their horse.
I actually intended to specify vaping products. So not just products, just specify vaping products, and then we'll hear help.
All right, all right.
Okay.
We can go ahead with the roll call. Okay, Mr. Cywitz.
One more question, I'm so sorry. May we open the discussion again? Now I lost it. That was the point. Well...
You're not old enough to have a senior moment.
We'll be reviewing a draft of the resolution before submitting it to the council.
Wouldn't we have to... A draft of the letter?
Yeah.
Then you just maybe send a copy to everybody?
I don't mind if you want to send it around an email or something, but I trust Joe and Linda to do this.
Yes.
He said yes. Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke? Yes. Anything else under new business?
I'm just gonna ask Dr. Anamon and Mr. Novak to just tell me, do I need to make a motion for any of this stuff? Or are you on board?
We'll talk about it in committee.
Yeah, I think it's thirteen, our health curriculum. I think we're ahead of the game there.
Well, I was looking for something short-term to get the word out, in whatever way is effective.
We are following up with our CASA survey. There's a couple of questions we wanted to expand upon, and it was a request from CASA to add vaping questions to it, and also add some informational links and...
Okay.
You know, get it out there immediately, because that's something we're doing in the next week or two. And then we can talk to that committee about what particulars...
Well, I'm certainly, I think that's perfect for curriculum, but I think to get a safety warning out, I think I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion...
Every student would click on the survey with the link to the information you're requesting they see. So to me, it seems...
And if they just, you know, kids will click on an agreement for anything.
Not when they're being supervised by our staff.
The only thing that I would suggest is that if you're gonna, and I've read the article, and I do manage the nurses, the only thing I would suggest is that, and I do think it had a lot of credible sources in it, and I would agree with you, but if you're gonna try to push something out as an educational piece to parents, to staff, I think that should be vetted through administration and our staff, those professionals that are the experts in the field, to make sure that the information that gets out there is actually, like, appropriate and valid. That's not a...
It feels like it's administering to schools.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion.
I was just gonna say, this is an administrative function, and I understand what your motion should be, but this is something that Alex, I think, should bring up with his administrative council meeting, decide what best way to do this, and then whatever that is, do it, whether it's a letter to parents or a letter to kids.
Well, he hasn't agreed to do it yet. So I'm gonna make a motion that the administration take action within, is thirty days reasonable? To...
I don't know.
But that's not, it's not a...
To the safety warning to the students in the schools.
I was gonna say, that's not really, no, well, the board would have reviewed curriculum and included curriculum. If this topic did not be in a new health curriculum, you just go, no. But when you're, when you're talking about what goes on within the school and how we educate the kids within that curriculum, that's the superintendent's responsibility, the directors...
I'm not saying what you have to put in, I'm just saying that they give a safety warning.
But I understand.
It's up to them to what, how they do it, what they do, it's just that I want them to do it quickly to prevent kids from damaging themselves, because it's an active threat to their health.
We all agree on that. We're not trying to say that we're supporting this. We are 100% against smoking, vaping, e-cigarette, the whole war, the whole, the whole bit. It's just, I think, deciding to have an assembly or not have an assembly, it's an administrative task.
I'm not specifying an assembly. I'm just saying that you get out a safety warning about the dangers of the vaping and the popcorn lung. That's all I'm asking, is that we do it in short order because the kids are vaping every day. I don't know how quickly somebody can get damaged by this for sure. All I know is that the doctors seem to think it was pretty, it could happen pretty quickly, depending upon the person. And some of these kids are vaping every day. And if we wait three months, there could have been somebody who could have been helped. That's all I'm saying. That's my motion, if somebody wants to second it, great, if not, then, then not.
Anything else under new business?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion that the policies presented on the website for consideration, for changes and such, show editing marks, crossouts where language is omitted, bold font or something for to show what the actual added or changed language is so that it's easy for the public and the board to see what the differences are without having to do major, major time-consuming research.
You mean, you mean when the agenda's posted?
No.
The policies that are up for approval?
They're posted on the website, under the, under the board section, the policy section.
Right.
And then policies for consideration.
That's what I mean, so policies for consideration.
But that's on the public.
There is a... There is a simple solution, Glenn. There is a fairly simple solution. Strauss does offer, you know, for additional fee of whatever, we can get additional, I guess, usernames for the board so they can log on to the Strauss website and see the updates as they come in in real time. They have them in Word, they have them as PDFs, and we can get every board member for, I don't know what the fee would be, the ability to log on there. And furthermore, we could also get, have the opportunity for the public for additional fee of something that the public would have access to review our policies in the same format that we would review them on the Strauss website, not edit them, but review them.
There's a problem with that, two problems, actually. One, a lot of the Strauss stuff comes in with options that the policy committee considers, checks the options, fills in the blanks, and then you have a finalized policy.
This would be before that, it would have all the, as it comes in.
As the problem, it would be before that. We need the final version with what the policy is.
He wants the copies, like, when we take them out of committee, that where they're crossed out, to be on the website so that it's easier to read.
That also will cover policies that board members or whoever, the administration bring up, that aren't Strauss estimate. So I, we're making the motion for all policies that, you know, we have shown so that the public can see it and the board members can see it.
With the edits, like, track changes for...
Is that hard to do?
We could figure it out.
Most of them, most of them come in that way, so it's really, except for the Strauss estimate ones. The Strauss estimate one should be pretty easy, which is, what, 90% of them, 95% of them?
Almost 100%.
You know, and then, and then the other stuff that the policy committee chooses to look up and say, "Hey, listen, we need to update this, we need to do this." Policy committee, you know, is gonna be looking at things that were brought up as concerns. Those things, when I used to do them, I used to do my own markup, and then I was able to email it to Dr. Anamon as a markup, so that they knew what we were gonna have discuss, discuss at the committee meeting. So if anybody's doing that on the policy committee, again, all we have to, all they have to do is provide that to Barbara and Alex. It's not that big of a, I can't see it as big, that big of a deal.
Mr. Drew?
My inversion of civil words, have an option to compare two documents with those kinds of changes, which would be way cheaper than paying Strauss estimate per user access. So somebody's got the ability to do it.
Glenn, just correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think you're even asking for compare documents. It's really just a track changes version that shows what the edits are.
I just want one version that shows what you're reading and what we're adding. That's it.
Yeah.
And simple stuff, and to compare the documents, Steve, some of these things are 24 pages long, and you got 20 or 30 documents on an agenda. So if you have to compare two documents, it's so time-consuming. If you can just scan through and watch, watch for the crossouts and...
No, it compares them and gives you the, this was added, this was struck out, this was... It gives you the markup, you're looking for...
All right, we're cross-talking, okay.
So we'll handle it through committee, we'll mark up, we'll give it to Barbara, we'll get it onto the website. Does that make sense?
It does, but that, what I was saying before, this is something the board has to vote on because these policies are still in draft format, they're not public, unless the board wants to make them public.
Oh, oh, okay.
So that's a board...
I thought you meant in the board portion of the, the, you know, website.
I said for public.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Because the public has the same problem. It's like, how do they know what's going on? How can they come and speak to us if they can't tell what we're doing? And, you know, a lot of them don't even know where to find the actual first version of the policy. It's not that easy to navigate because our indexing system is spread, it's not one single index. It's spread into, into all the different sections separately. We have a whole bunch of different indexes.
Second.
I have a second.
No. Okay, so, so the motion is to have it on the website, is that...
Yeah.
With the redacted...
The versions of policies that are up for approval.
Another transparency thing, but it's also a big time saver.
I guess, any, and we're just cutting, no more discussion, Glenn. Let's, roll call, Mrs. Francisco. Mr. Cywitz? Mr. Drew?
Can you come back to me, please?
Mrs. Dwyer?
No.
Mrs. Fritz? Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke? Yes. Mr. Drew?
Yeah.
Is that for, all for new business?
Last one.
This one will be quick, though.
Because we have executive session now.
I expect to have lots of objections, but I object.
Then we can just move right on right now.
Jack, your time's up.
I recently asked Barbara for copies of our employment applications. There are five of them. And I looked at them to see if they asked a question, because I want to be able to ask our administrators a question and have them know the answer. And, because I kind of anticipated what was gonna happen today. And, so, only, a couple of these have a question that asks if the person has a relative in the district, and it's limited, limited to a relative of the superintendent, board member, or a supervisor. I'm asking that we add a question to all of our applications. If this says, "Do you have a relative that is employed in the district?" On top of that, that other question that's in most of them. So it should ask the original question that is in a couple of them already, and then also just, "Do you have a relative in the district?" period. And then I imagine that if they say yes to that, the administrators would find out who it is and figure out if there's any implications, and be able to answer private questions if the board member had one. That's my motion, that just be added to the application so that at least the administrators are aware.
Is there any more discussion? Are you seconding it?
All right, so...
You're certain?
What is it?
If I have a...
If I have a third cousin that works in the district, what's my?
That might not matter, but if you have a, a third cousin that's gonna be a supervisor for somebody or, or is in a position of influence anyway, it might matter. I mean, we, we just a couple of meetings ago voted on somebody who's gonna be a custodian and the, the other person in the district had no relation to that, that position at all and it didn't matter. But this is something that, you know, it just, it's just about being well informed and knowing what you're voting.
But I think he already, I, I, I wanna say that they already do that. Well, if, if there's somebody in the district, I think he, did, do you talk to them?
Do I talk to who?
Not me. He's not talking to me now. When you, with the employment application, what is the process? When somebody checks off, yes, I'm related to me or whatever.
It, it's not on all.
I got a couple of questions, is this your last motion?
Yes.
Okay.
You have a motion, okay.
Second.
But, but, but there's a motion on the floor, that's the problem.
Regarding this?
Right?
Yes, regarding his motion.
About this, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were moving on to something else.
I sort of see the value in this, but I don't think we're gonna get to the end of any sort of potential corruption because it might be, you know, is your friend.
Mr. Drew, please stop saying stuff about corruption, I, I, I feel like that's kinda disingenuous.
I'll be happy to use it.
Well, I mean, what, a problem maybe, but corruption, I, I don't, I don't think that's the word. A conflict of interest, maybe?
Could be a friend, it could be you're close to some political boss, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, we're not gonna arrive at understanding all relationships in a small town that somebody might have.
There's gonna be friendships that'll, no one, no one address that at all.
No, which is probably the bigger issue.
So, so that, you wanna put on the application, that's your motion?
Question to be on the application so that if we want to inquire, we can.
So, did you second that motion?
I did.
Okay, um, let's do the roll call, please.
I'll reverse alphabetical order, I'm still banking.
Well, you seconded, you seconded, you go first.
All right, all right, all right, come on, let's, let's just do the roll call.
Mr. Sidewitz. No, Ms., Ms., Mr. Sidewitz.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
No.
Mrs. Dwyer.
No.
Mrs. Fritz.
No.
Mr. Guarino.
No.
Mr. Huber.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
No.
Are you done? Thank you, did you have something else, Mr. Drew, or can we get a motion to close petitions and, and new business?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. We're gonna move on now to petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each petitioner for a period of thirty minutes. Then the time permitting, other petitioners, other petitions and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed. Until the thirty minute time period expires, all speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Mrs. Francisco, has anybody signed up for the second part?
Uh, no.
No, okay. Anyone want to speak? Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't see Mr. Fenwick in the audience.
Come on up, Kate, yes.
Good evening.
I shouldn't say that.
My name is Kate Romeo, I live at one Crest Hill Drive in Oak Ridge. I didn't plan on speaking, but first I just wanna say thank you to the administration for working on not allowing voting a paradise in old school. We should not have voting in a school when children are present, it is very dangerous, it is very scary. I know that Dr. Anamone is working on that, I just wanna ask the board if a resolution is not found with the county or whatever, that you could work out a calendar that our children are not there when voting is happening. It was scary, I don't know if any of you were there to see it, but the parking, when our children are on the playground, I can go on and on talking about a safety issue that cannot continue, please. And thank you, Dr. Anamone, and thank you to our principals who are in agreement and I know that they are working on this, but if a resolution isn't found, please change the calendar, I know it was a professional development day, something has to be done. With that, school safety, I heard about mental health, I heard about vaping and no school in America today could have enough mental health, in my opinion. When you're looking at your budget, could you please look to put full-time social workers in our elementary schools? Please, find out what it costs, our children need counselors, there is more research than we could talk about for weeks building relationships with an adult. Every year they get a new teacher, but that counselor stays, but ours are only part-time. Please, we have to consider more counselors in our district, our children need them every day, not half the day, not three days a week, not two days a week, every day. There are more children in our country with anxiety and more mental health issues than we have time to discuss in your term here on this board. Please look at more counselors in every school, it's, it is a big cost, but find out what it costs. I don't think I'm allowed to ask questions, so please be careful when you're talking about chemicals that are in vaping and whatever, if you look at the history of K-2, which is similar to marijuana, the FDA banned the chemicals that were in it and then the compound structure was changed and new drugs were created. Children are savvy, adults are savvy in making money on these things, please be careful what you put your name on when it comes to chemicals with drugs and things like that, know what you're talking about. I was hoping you were gonna table that vote on writing that letter so that you can look into those chemicals and know really, because they'll, they will replace it with another chemical tomorrow, probably within the hour, forget about tomorrow. I don't know when I'm on time, but I hope the nepotism that you voted on was the normal Strauss estimate one. Let's talk about transparency, let's also talk about treating an incredible staff in this district and an administration with fairness. Fairness, why would we treat our staff in West Milford any different than we do across the state of New Jersey or anywhere else? Please, stop, stop with it. Yes, we are all friends, yes, many are related in West Milford, it's gonna happen. And, you know, we know that, it's been the history of West Milford forever, it's a small, good town and that's what makes us special. So I really hope, I'm not sure what, I'm confused on it, but I hope that it was the regular Strauss estimate policy that was voted on and that the silliness could stop. My last thing was transparency issue, I vote you in on the board. So I trust that you're reading those policies, I don't need to see as a public member what's crossed off, I need to know that you're voting what's right for our children. So you need to read those policies before you come here to vote on them, I don't. I need to know that you are making the right choices for our kids. Please read those policies before you come and vote on them, know what the changes are, I don't need to know it, I need to get to the website and see what your policy is so that I know I'm following it, my child's following it, my friends are following it, but you vote on that, I don't need to come here and fight you on what policy you're gonna vote on. You're good adults that are here volunteering. So I think that's everything, I, I thank all of you and we really do, we have great, great staff here, trust them, work together, these meetings are entertainment sometimes because you are mean to each other. Some of that needs to happen before we get here. And that's it, thank you, thank you, I really just came up to say, please don't let voting happen at PK.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up. Don't touch my husband, I think.
No, I'm not gonna talk about that, don't worry. I was only complimenting him, by the way, Glenn, but he was out there watching.
I, I would prefer his name not mentioned, okay?
I was only complimenting him.
Thank you.
All right, Jim, Jim Foody, Tukashaka Trail North, Hewitt, New Jersey. What I wanted to talk about before with, with Mr. Drew, he probably, out of all the board members, understands this budget and the budget process better than anybody else. He's got a certificate to be a business administrator and you keep him off of that? The reason he was on that committee and he was chair is because of his training. And, and now you keep him off it, and I gotta wonder why? Because you know that he can go through that budget as good as her, if not better. And you, you put him in.
Excuse me, come on, we're gonna.
Are you gonna, are you gonna shut me down again?
No.
Like you did to Mr. Drew before?
No.
You have Mr. Bailey on the, as the, as the chairman. And I heard a word before about the kids and I, Mrs. Dwyer, I think you used accountability. That you want these kids in their class, nine minutes, accountability, accountability, accountability. But there's no accountability for the people that sit here. He comes in late, leaves early, God, he's never been to, in, in all the years I've been on the board, he's never, never been to a board retreat where you set board goals, you set district goals. And the same goes true for all the superintendent interviews that we've had, didn't attend a one. Probably the most important things that a board member can do besides being in that back room during executive session. So, you know, I see the stuff going on here, I saw in, in the last meeting, Mr. Drew is speaking, he gets up, he's talking to you, he's gotta address the meeting through the chair and you're having a conversation with Mr. Bailey while he's speaking. I, I, I just, I don't get it. One other thing, I'm gonna speak about the budget at the next meeting, I have a meeting with Dr. Anamone with some questions, but, um, on two twenty-two, February twenty-second, I believe it was last Thursday, Alex? I texted you. I was on Route twenty-three southbound in front of a light at, at, uh, Jackson Ave and twenty-three. The light turns green for me to continue on going south on twenty-three. And the school bus goes shooting through a red light, West Milford School Bus, bus number two forty, isn't that great?
I just wanna caution you, you know, be careful what you say just in case you implicate any.
I'm not implicating.
Just in case you implicate yourself in any slander or libel, this, you know, you don't wanna.
I.
Get yourself exposed to that.
I get it, I get it, I know that, Joe, I've had the conversations about with, with you, with you about that. But I witnessed a bus go shooting across twenty-three. Right, right, right through a red light. And I, I reached out to Dr. Anamone to let him know. I, I'll be putting in a formal request, Barbara, tomorrow, I wanna know the driver on that bus on that day because I plan on filing a complaint, cause that's unacceptable. I don't care if there were one kid, or two kids or three kids on that bus, unacceptable. So I, I, I don't know if he shared that information with you, I'll share it with you and share a lot of other, other things as well.
Would anyone else like to speak under petitions and requests? Yes. Aye. Good.
My name is Deborah Rousseau, I live at seventy-one Hudson Drive, A, please excuse my mom uniform. B, I'm, I'm gonna be coming to meetings because I'm interested in the budget and how our school system runs, but I just wanted to say tonight, thank you to Mr. Novak and to Mr. Citro, who's not here, and the Board of Education for allowing CASA to use the Macabre Gym so we can host the annual semi-formal, which I can announce the date now because I haven't given permission. It is going to be April twenty-seventh and if it weren't for the school district and for the hard work of Rebecca Sumf, who is the CASA coordinator and for the help of Mr. Tranta Costa and the help of Mr. Novak and Mr. Citro allowing us to use the Macabre Gym, we wouldn't be having a summer formal, semi-formal this year because the rec center is having their floors replaced. So I just wanted to thank you guys for not disappointing and helping us and letting these seventh and eighth graders have what they look forward to all year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Julie Otschuski, I live at twenty-two Glen Cross Road. And I apologize in advance, I'm not great at public speaking, so I wrote down what I wanted to say. But I know many of you have read my letter, I sent a letter to all the board members and they're aware of this, my safety concerns. I wanna thank the ones who reached out to me very quickly and those who I have not had the chance to get back to, I will be in touch. For those who have not read my letter, I will summarize it, I was let into this school and was able to walk through the hall, through, past all those classrooms, unattended, to the office, uh, sorry. I was let into Westbrook School and I was able to walk through the halls unattended to the office, past at least three classrooms. Now regardless of whether I had an appointment or not, whether you were expecting me or not, I have no children in this school district, I am a stranger to this school, a stranger. Nobody asked me my name at the door, they asked me what I'm here for. I feel we are all too trusting and no one wants to believe that violence will happen to us, but this is the world we live in today, we cannot trust anyone. It is to my understanding that the high school bleachers need to be replaced and I agree. But your plan to spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on them and the budget for the field house has doubled to two hundred thousand dollars, that is just short of one million dollars being dumped into the sports program and that is shameful. When the security in all the schools needs updating. Now I'm going to assume you board members have children, so I would like to ask you, would you rather sit on top of the line fancy bleachers or would you like your children to come home alive? The answer should be obvious. Now if you have to come up with one million dollars for updates to a football field, it should be easy to come with, up with money to update security. I plan to forward my concerns about the security in all of our schools to my county and state representatives, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? If not. I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we need a motion to go into executive session.
I move that at ten nineteen, we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel appointments, resignations, current litigation matters, special education matters, negotiations, HIBs and matters of attorney-client privilege.
And we, we will return for action. We need a second, did you second, Nicole?
Yes.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Bailey, Mr. Sidewitz, Mr. Drew.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Guarino.
Here.
Mrs. Fritz.
Here.
Mr. Huber.
Still here.
Mrs. O'Brien, Mrs. Van Dyke.
Okay, so let's go to the first, I, Perry, under education, okay. Move to approve the recommendation of the superintendent. To confirm the results of EPIV. Two, two thousand eighteen E fourteen is unsubstantiated and two thousand eighteen H ten is substantiated.
Need a second?
Second. I'm sorry, I'm daydreaming.
Uh, any discussions?
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Guarino.
Yes.
Mr. Huber.
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz.
Yes.
Mr. Sidewitz.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Now, under budget and finance. Really, you wanna move that? Well, you know what, Nicole has it, let Nicole move, she's better right in front of us. We can have her quicker.
I make a motion to move the recommendation of the superintendent. I make a motion to move the recommendation of the superintendent for resolution number 10.
They need a second?
Second.
Any discussions? If not, Mrs. Francisco? Mr. Sidowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Garino.
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz.
Yes.